Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. And yeah, so for a study session, we still need to do roll call and say where we are, right Scott? Yeah, so Bruce Cantor, Oakland County, Michigan, and Lathrow Village.
Ian Ferguson, Oakland County, Michigan, Lathrow Village.
Alain Cedric, Lathrow Village, Oakland County, Michigan.
Don Medley, Oldfield, New York, Suffolk County.
Okay, I think Kelly will be joining us a little bit later.
Oh, okay, thank you.
So, thank you, Avette.
You're welcome.
Okay, so first on the agenda is speed bumps and traffic control. Is Cheryl, you gonna introduce that?
Really quickly, I just have a question. Is there a reason that we decided on this particular order for the agenda items?
Not that I know of. Why did you, you wanna suggest changing the order?
It just seemed, the only thing, I mean, if we're gonna spend all the time and we're gonna spend the time here and studying, so I didn't know if we should do older business first. And the speed bump discussion came up, you know, probably within the last month. And so that was my only concern, but I'm here for the duration. I just, I didn't know.
Yeah, well, I'm thinking just because we've got some, some other people. We've got Alexander and here to talk about it, so maybe we do that first. And then if you want, we can, I have no problem.
No, that's great. I just wondered how we, how we set that agenda. So thank you.
Yeah, okay.
That's probably why Cheryl did that is because we have guests.
Yeah, so, all right, Cheryl, are you gonna introduce that or?
All right, Dan. To start with, we've had a number of residents contact us in regards to traffic speeds on various streets. And we were looking at approach, ways to approach that. And as you know, we have the radar system on the two radar signs in place as well as with Chief Scott has increased, I'm sorry, Chief Scott McKee increased patrols and problem areas at key times. And I think there might be even a decoy vehicle out there every once in a while. But one of the things that has also arisen has been an inquiry relative to if we want to have speed humps or speed bumps. And we have our engineer, Scott Ringler, with us here today. And I believe we have Alexander Rusinski, the traffic engineer for the Road Commission with us as well. I don't know if there's other guests to speak to that topic. And then Bruce Hewitt-Hassel raised an issue relative to a, an area that blocked by Red River and Morningside. So this is all part of that discussion. So I don't know who wants to take it off first. Chief Scott or engineer Scott or attorney Scott, they all probably wanna say something.
I'll defer to one of the other Scots.
I agree, I would defer right now to Scott Ringler if he is willing to take the lead.
Yeah, happy to take the lead. So Alex is here from the Road Commission. Kind of to go over the different types of traffic calming that that's available. We have done numerous speed humps in the city of Ferndale. There's pros and cons. I think Alex is gonna touch base on that also. But it, but as a cost, you're looking at typically three to $5,000 for each speed hump. We definitely don't recommend speed bumps, but speed humps, which is a much softer transition from the, from the paved surface to the hump itself and then back to the paved surface. You know, there's different methods and reasons why these are installed. I know in Ferndale, it's resident driven. So a particular block has to have a petition with, I believe it's more than 50% of the residents to sign the petition for the city to evaluate and study if a speed bump is needed on that street. And then from there, we gather all that information and where the city wants them. And we actually design them and install them as part of the city's pavement repair program, just similar to what the city of Lathrow Village has. So we're able to, you know, get a little better cost by including it in a much bigger project. I don't honestly know where the cities having issues with speeding. Generally, your streets are pretty, you know, they're, they're pretty short in duration. They're not like really long and excessive. The three or four that come to mind are Santa Barbara, Bloomfield, and Lathrow Boulevard. And each of them streets seem to have a, have a stop sign at probably every third or fourth side street. So there's, so cars are stopping. The one thing I've always been told is a stop sign isn't traffic calming. So you know, it's, it's a regulation sign. I think, you know, to add new ones, it's requires a warrant the city and the police have to do to warrant that stop sign. And same with the removal of one. So with that, I can answer any kind of questions or we can let Alex go through, you know, the different types of traffic calming, mainly the speed humps.
So Scott, the other area that we talked about is Rainbow Drive that cuts through from Southfield to the Outer Mile at 11. And, and I would say that the traffic, the stop signs are not particularly even traffic calming there. They're, they're not being adhered to.
Well, you know, that's, that's, you know, a situation that, you know, potentially get the, the police to enforce a little more.
And when the police are there, as we discussed at our last meeting, it's very effective because they're visible and people actually heed. But as we also discussed with, with Chief McGee, you know, they can't be everywhere at all times. And so when they're not there, it's just, it's the Audubon sometimes.
Yeah, and that, and that, that stretch there is, has a long distance between stop signs, which is why, why it's so bad on that, that particular spot.
Yeah, I'm kinda trying to figure out which rainbow that is. Oh, south.
Yeah, it's south of 696 and you turn off the, the outer road, go past the park and you can go all the way through and cut to Southfield and.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Couple, couple of questions, Scott, before, before we, we do, before Alex, Alexander goes. So in, in the, there was two things I was kinda confused about in the, in the notes. So, so it says that the, the, the Road Commission has jurisdiction over township roads. Does that include the, the residential roads? Or was that in reference to the main streets?
No, the, the Road Commission has jurisdiction over roads that are located in a township. They have no jurisdiction over the city of Lathrow Roads other than Southfield Road and 12 Mile.
Okay, that's what I thought. Okay. And, and so the, so the, the, what was included in our packet was the, there was a Road Commission regulation for the installation of speed humps. You talked about like the 85th percentile, the speed had to be greater than 35 miles an hour, traffic volume in excess of 1,000 vehicles a day and so forth. So that doesn't, that doesn't apply to the, the neighborhoods. That would only be if we had a 25 mile an hour road that was a main road, correct?
Yeah, well, you know, that's their typical for township, for township roads that are under the jurisdiction of the Road Commission. Yeah, he's just throwing it. That's kind of the.
I'll, I'll chime in a little bit here. I'm, I'm Alex Rusinski, I'm the traffic engineer for the Road Commission for Oakland County. That, that example that I set is for townships that have roads that are under RCOC jurisdiction. Those are the regulations that our board set up. So it wouldn't necessarily apply to anything in, in Lathrow Village for your guys' residential roads, but that's what we have as our program. That's what we put out there as our guidance to communities that request speed humps for us. Common in Royal Oak Township, Orion Township, more, you know, any of the townships where we have jurisdiction. The key component that I'll, that I'll point out there is that 85th percentile speed. That's the speed at which 85% or more of the cars are traveling at or below. My experience has been in most residential neighborhoods, that 85th percentile speed is 30, 31, 32 miles an hour. That is what I would consider a typical residential speed. It's very deceptive to people who are stationary because you have a large vehicle moving at them or towards them. And it appears quite frequently that they're traveling at, at an excessive speed where they're traveling at a 30 miles an hour or 31 miles an hour. I don't know exactly, you know, what's happening with, with Lathrow Village, but it, it tends to be quite frequently with a lot of stationary residents, it's a perception issue. The other component that comes into play here is, you know, general traffic calming. There are several methods. Quite frequently, what we experienced at RCOC in our sublocal roads is there's a lot of on-street parking, which acts as a natural buffer because it constricts the road. It makes drivers a little bit more uncomfortable because it makes that roadway feel narrower. So it, just having parking on the street, that adds to it. I don't believe Lathrow has any on-street parking, but that's kind of one of those components that we see frequently in a lot of the townships that we deal with. Scott brought it up a little bit earlier about speed humps and speed bumps. I do not recommend a speed bump. Speed bumps are what you usually see in a parking lot. You know, they're about two, three feet wide and about six inches tall. You almost have to come to a complete stop before you go over a speed bump. They're very damaging to equipment and they're very jarring to drivers. The idea of a speed hump is to get people to slow down and traverse over that area at a speed less than 25 miles an hour. The detail that I provided, I actually got from the city of Farmington Hills, is their speed hump. It's roughly 12 feet long. It's roughly three inches tall, three and a half inches tall. And it's designed for a vehicle to safely travel over it at about 20 miles an hour. Most cars will slow down just because it's different. You know, they see that raise and they go, okay, I don't wanna, I don't wanna go at a fast speed. There's been a couple of studies about it. If you increase that height to four inches, it slows them down to about 17 miles an hour. It all depends on what you wanna do. One area that I will caution, and it's a little bit of a con about speed humps, is emergency access, first responders, and winter maintenance. I had something that I would talk about with, you know, the chief and, and your guys' fire department about what their feelings are with, you know, emergency response. A lot of communities won't put them on what they call their primary fire routes or where they have particular, you know, runs that they use frequently for emergency response needs. It's not that they need to slow those vehicles down. It's just that if they're transporting a patient in the back of an ambulance and they're needing to perform, you know, putting in an IV line or something else like that, and then all of a sudden the driver hits a speed hump, that's gonna be jarring to the patient in the back and probably to the EMT working on that patient. So that's something that would have to be considered on a case-by-case basis for you guys. The big pro, and study after study has shown this, they're effective. They do a great job in slowing traffic down. The, the part that goes with that is it has to be done as a system. If you put it on one street and you, you will essentially move that problem to an adjoining street. People will move to a neighboring roadway just to avoid that speed hump. So you shifted it from Street A over to Street B. So you kinda have to look at it as a systematic approach. When we do it at the Road Commission, we will study an entire neighborhood. We require a petition from the residents with 75% of agreement that they would like the installation of a speed hump. We determine the most appropriate locations and we circulate that with the petition that the homeowners association goes out and, and circulates amongst the residents. Community buy-in is a key factor here. Because if you put them in and you don't have community buy-in, the complaint's always gonna be, well, why is it in front of my house? That's not where they're speeding at. They're speeding over here. You know, so it, it relates to a lot of, of those problems where you need to get that buy-in. The, the other issue in, in my own experience is most of the people that, that are speeding in a neighborhood are residents in that neighborhood. So it's a little bit of community policing that needs to go on. We do it with some of our local communities where we will invite the president of the homeowners association or vocal individuals in particular neighborhoods to go out with us when we'll do an independent radar study. We'll go out and we'll be, okay, where do you want us to sit at to do our study? And so they can get a little bit more of an understanding of where is it, where are they going to, what's going on with them? You know, this car looks like it's really going really fast, but it's going at 32 miles an hour. So it's developing that little bit of that understanding. We've also got some other equipment that we'll put up that's a little bit more discreet for doing two or three day counts of traffic volumes and traffic speeds that, that we can get that data and, and get a more, you know, a little bit more discreet review versus somebody standing on the side of the road with a radar gun. I don't care how, how discreet I try to be. I stand out like a sore, like a sore thumb. So that's part of it. You know, another con on them is, is really winter maintenance. And depending on how they're installed and where they're installed at, they're sometimes just get complaints from bicyclists, sometimes not. A lot of times bicyclists will move into the gutter and they will, you know, avoid the speed hump because there's a little bit of a gap on the side. But that also tends to be where you get a lot of debris and a lot of other pavement issues in that gutter pan. So that's part of this that has to come into play too about where you're installing them at. That's kind of in a nutshell, without getting into real specifics. And I'm more than glad to field some questions from you guys, but you know, they're very effective, they're highly effective when they're selected and they're used in a system. But you kinda have to do it that way. The, the cons are, you know, they are a little bit pricey to, to install. They are a maintenance issue. And they, they can impact, you know, some response times for police, fire, and, and EMS. So that's part of that consideration.
Hey Alex, if I could add one of the cons, there's actually two cons, location. You know, they're gonna be in front of somebody's house. And we know what happened with stopper with signs. People might not want one of these in front of their house and they, they can be noisy. Cause is a, maybe an older car that goes through there at 20 miles an hour, it makes some noise. So, you know, there's a couple more cons to it.
Certainly, I wouldn't disagree with that, Scott. It, it is an issue with, with older vehicles that have, you know, issues with suspensions or et cetera, that can be a problem. You know, and it is a long-term maintenance item as well. They need to be maintained the same as, as, as any city street is. And because they're a raised item, you will have some vehicles that will strike them and, and have an issue with that.
Is there a negative effect on snow plows?
I can tell you my maintenance guys don't like them. Every time that we've installed them, I, I get an earful from them. Speed humps tend to be okay. They're signed. You know, they'll be signed as it indicates a speed hump. Usually they're gradual enough, 12 feet long, three inches tall. They're gradual enough that they can release a little bit of that underbelly plow pressure and it can ride over it. You will get some snow accumulation and it does tend to be an issue. But most of the time, I don't know if, if you guys have front plows that come up behind your big, larger DPW trucks and clear out cul-de-sacs and street returns. Where we've got them, our front plows go in and they do a much better job of cleaning up those areas by the speed humps. It does tend to ice up a little bit on the gutter pans just because you've got a natural pinch point on the sides. It, it can be a little bit of an issue, but it takes a little bit of time and effort. And, you know, having a smaller street system, it might be easier to handle. But that's something that I would talk to your DPW about since they're the ones that are plowing the side streets. They're gonna have to deal with them if you guys install them.
Alex, do they, do they get, I'm just curious, do they get less effective over time in terms of, you know, cause like when, when you first put them down, you know, people are going to, oh boy, here goes the dog, sorry. So, so is, hold on one sec. Guys, quiet! All right, um. Ian, why don't you go ask your question? I'll take care of the dogs. I'll come back and ask this question.
Yeah, Bruce, no problem. Hey, you should have hired me as a dog sitter, but just a quick question. You, you mentioned you employed as a, as a system. Can you explain how you employed as a system? I know you're doing other roads, but there's a calculation there as far as road length. And then obviously you're multiplying it by whatever. So can you explain that a bit?
Sure. There's been a couple of studies done by the Institute for Transportation Engineers that recommends spacing on speed humps. Anywhere from roughly 500 to 750 feet apart is, is what they determined to be the quote-unquote most effective. And in that particular study, they yielded results of around an 85th percentile speed of 18 miles an hour. Studies have shown them up where from 750 to 1,000 feet, they result in an 85th percentile of, of right around that 23, 24 miles an hour. Looking at it that way, we look at it and go about 1,000 feet is where we want them at. You go over that speed hump, your speed decreases. Most drivers look at it and they go, okay, you're accelerating after you slow down. It's just a human reaction to it. A lot of drivers go, I just lost 10 seconds by going over that speed hump. Now I gotta make up for that lost time. It's the same issue with unwarranted stop signs. People wanna make up for the time that they feel that they lost. So they accelerate away from those speed humps. What you wanna do is you wanna catch them before they get up to enough speed where they're going above that 31, 32 miles an hour. And that's roughly in that 750, 1,000 foot range. We look at it as an entire subdivision. We look at it and go, okay, if we put a speed hump over here, where's the traffic going to go to? They're gonna go over to this street here. Where's it make sense? And we talk with the residents in that neighborhood. Where do you guys see an issue with speeding? Where do you perceive the problem to be? And we'll go out and we'll actually sit out there and I'll put one of my technicians out there, usually at about six o'clock in the morning. And I'll have them sit out there until 10 or 11 o'clock in the morning on, on certain days. And they'll just watch traffic. What's happening? You know, there another car on the side of the road. So we kinda look at it really as a hands-on approach. Farmington Hills has had a lot of success with their program doing this. They implemented it about 15 years ago, give or take. They had an initial push where they had seven or eight neighborhoods that wanted them installed right away in those first couple of years. Since then, they've really slowed down with their installation because of that community involvement component that they utilize. They do the same thing where they do a lot of community engagement. And they realize when they're looking at the cars that are speeding, oh, that's, you know, that's Mrs. O'Leary's grandson. You know, he comes by every third Thursday. You know, so they realize where those cars are going and they realize that it's their neighbors. And a lot of that is somebody in the neighborhood going, hey, can, can you slow down a little bit? We live here too. You know, some communities, Farmington Hills has, has, if they notice it on one particular issue, they'll have an officer pay a visit to, to a particular home or, and they'll say, hey, we've got a lot of complaints about this vehicle with this tag number speeding. Just to remind you, the speed limit's 25 miles an hour. It's, it's not necessarily a verbal warning, but it's, it's that community outreach component of it that's a little bit more effective. And usually that has a pretty good impact.
All right, Alex, back, back to my question. Dogs are settled. So yeah, I was just curious, as I would imagine that like at the beginning, when they're first put out there, the, you know, they, they might be a little bit more effective because I think, and I get, I'm asking this as a question, not a statement. But I, is it normal behavior that, that people will, will slow down initially a lot? And then if they're repeatedly using that same area, they're gonna figure out, you know, what that maximum speed is that they can hit it without being too disruptive. So does, is, you know, so is it more effective at the beginning and then the effectiveness goes down but kinda levels out? Or how, how does that work?
I would say it's a fair statement. When, when they're first installed, people don't know how fast they can go over them. And they'll, they'll figure that out pretty quickly. You know, and then they'll, they'll adapt their driving style to, to make it as least disruptive to their driving as possible. Like I said, with, with them being three inches tall and, and 12 feet long, they, you can go over them, you know, that 22, 23 miles an hour pretty, pretty comfortably. You know, you're still naturally gonna slow down. I don't think most people, if you, if you don't slow down, you're going to feel them. It's going to have an impact on your vehicle. You notice it. I would recommend, take a drive down into Ferndale, like, like Scott had said, and drive some of the ones in Ferndale. They're pretty well marked. They're, they're really well done. And it's a good example of, of how to effectively install them and maintain it. Now, Ferndale does have on-street parking, so it's a little different than you guys. So their roads do feel a little bit more narrow and I don't think most people would be comfortable trying to hit that at 25 miles an hour with a car parked right next to it.
Yeah. And, and did you say, so typically with, with each speed hump, you're gonna have a sign on each side of the speed hump?
Yeah, on, on each approaching side and we, we, we put and just a, a standard speed hump sign. And then what we'll do at the end of each block is we always put up a notice that just says, "Speed hump ahead." It's just a speed hump sign and it's got a little ahead plaque underneath it.
So typically like four, then four signs associated with each speed hump?
Yeah, if you've got multiple humps on a block, you'll, you'll only have the heads at the end of the block. You know, just, it's, it's notifying drivers that there's something there, you know, that say they're not familiar with the neighborhood. You don't want them going down the road and hitting this thing and, and losing control of their vehicle because they're, they weren't aware that there's a problem. It's a warning sign. It's not a regulatory sign like a, like a stop sign or a speed limit sign. It's just a 30 inch by 30 inch yellow background on a single post.
Yeah. And, okay.
No, go ahead.
I was, and, and the, the, you know, you talked about 1,000 feet, you know, spacing is best. How does, how does that interact with stop signs? So for example, a lot of our blocks, we have stop signs, you know, on each corner. And, you know, you may have a, a thousand feet in between those two stop signs. If you put one in the middle, you know, then they hit the stop sign. So I would assume that that would kinda negate the need for having to have one, you know, another 500 feet down the road or something like that.
Correct. You, you treat that intersection as its own separate entity. So if, if you've got a block that's, I'm just gonna throw out the perfect number, 2,000 feet long with stop signs at each end, you'd only put one speed hump roughly at the mid-block. You know, or if you've got a 750 foot long block, you, you wouldn't just go down and put it past the next stop sign. You'd break it up.
Alex, I, I just wanna ask, cause I'm not sure, cause I've, I've not gotten out and walked this or, or anything, but when I'm driving, is this the same height and kind of the same length as what's known as a speed table as well?
Very, very similar. It, it's a, it, they're, the two terms are commonly interchanged. Quite frequently, speed tables tend to have more of a plateau on the top where a speed hump is more of a parabolic shape.
Okay. Speed tables are very. I remember my geography. I, I know the, I've, I've got that for, I was proud of myself in the, in the documents that I remembered that.
Alex, did you guys put, install, install these in Pleasant Ridge?
Pleasant Ridge's stuff, they, they maintain their own side streets and any, every city and village will maintain their own local, local roads. The side streets, the sublocal roads aren't under our jurisdiction. We've got a few of them in Orion Township that have been installed. We've got a few of them in Lion Township. Royal Oak Township just installed some that we're working through some problems with them on. There was some miscommunication with their contractor. So we're working through those problems with Royal Oak Township right now.
And one of the things when, when I was reading through the documents, there's also the thing that happens right before the intersection, like where there's cuts or lines. Were you presenting that as an option as well?
That, that, that's not something that, that we do, but I'm familiar with it. They're, they're commonly referred to typically as like a rumble strip.
Yeah.
And the, the, the problem with them, and I'll just be real frank about it, is most people, they, they tend to speed up when they see them because the faster you go over them, the less impact that they have on your vehicle. We've got a gentleman actually in, in our construction department that is doing a study on installing them currently in construction zones. And, and the issue with them that, that he found is And and the issue with them that that he found is. Um, you need to have one person react to it and then it kinda has a chain reaction with the people beyond them. So if you have a s- a lower volume roadway, they're they're much less effective. They're great in grabbing somebody's attention and going, hey, something's going on. So they look up and they naturally go, why is that there? Okay, you know, maybe that might help with coming to a stop sign and getting a little more adherent at a stop sign. But for speed control, they're not very effective for speed control.
Yeah, that was really helpful. I didn't, I didn't understand that, so I appreciate it.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, just a couple of questions. Uh, did you say you did the? Speed humps in Royal Oak Township? Did you do that on Cloverdale? Is that the one that you're referring to?
No, um, the the township actually installed them and they were, they were installed under permits. Um, the two streets were, uh, give me just a moment and I will, I will let you know. I'm gonna have to pull open my my email with them. Cuz I don't remember the names of the streets off the top of my head.
There's one main street which is Cloverdale and runs.
No, it is, it is not. It run, both of these streets run directly off of of Eight Mile. Um.
It's probably the one that runs right in front of the school.
Uh, it it runs on the backside cuz there were, again, there were a couple of issues with with them.
Okay.
Um, the the contractor, I'll be very frank, did not install them correctly. He inspo- he installed speed bumps, not speed humps. And they've already had several vehicles damaged uh from it. Um, Mitchell Dale was one of the streets that they installed it on. And uh. The other one was Westview was the other street that it was installed on in Royal Oak Township.
Okay, one question. Um, there is a, there's a speed deterrent um system that is. Um, convex where you're adding a layer to to uh the asphalt. I've seen those before. I'm not sure what they're called, but um, do you guys actually do those?
We we have not done anything like that and I'm not familiar with it.
Yeah, they're actually Cranbrook uh installed several as you enter the the main entrance of Cranbrook. They're right there, so you have to actually drive over three layers of, well, three consecutive. Speed, I call them convexes because it it's a dip, right? So there's a layer there, so I'm just trying to figure out what what that's called. I mean, I've never seen that before.
I mean, I I would think that 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 it would probably work in the same concept. The only drawback there is it's gonna pond water and it's gonna hold water. Um, you know, we we use something similar. Uh, we have mumble strips that go down the center line of a road. To alert a motorist if you're crossing over the center line and it's just, it's an alert that says, hey, you know, you're doing something you shouldn't be doing. Uh, I don't know how effective it would be as a speed control. That's that's something I'd have to look into.
Yeah, you know, the one, the ones you're talking about Ian, they actually use some of those in Potaski and those things are worse than speed bumps. Things and it's a huge clunk.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, Alex, the um, you know, I was looking at the the two programs that you included in the attachment, I think Rochester and Farmington is what it was. Um, so it sounds like um, you know, you guys recommend, you know, doing a a traffic safety. Campaign first and then using the the radar devices and then the one, the one. Uh, and I I guess I I'd like you to talk to, you know, what those those uh neighborhoods did, you know, kind of in a more detail. But I had one question about the the process. One of the things that you uh indicated there was you also had an ownership letter campaign. It says this, this program involves citizens collecting speed data for vehicles in their neighborhood. And after recording the speed and vehicle information, they basically reach out to those particular drivers. How how did the, how did the 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 residents determine the speed? Did you actually give them the speed guns to use?
Um, tha- that program, I know Farmington Hills did that and Farmington Hills has their own radar gun and they they work jointly with the residents. Um, we've done similar campaigns where we've got, we've got a radar gun that we use. Um, it's, uh, you know, i- it works, it's very obvious what you're doing. Um, so it's very difficult to be discreet with it. Um, they they collected that data and Farmington Hills with what they did. They worked with the police department to 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 issue those those letters to their own internal residents in those subdivisions. And it came from the engineering department that just says, hey, we received a lot of concerns from your neighborhood regarding speeding. They, uh, a study was conducted. Your vehicle was witnessed exceeding the the posted speed limit. Please be aware of your speeds in your neighborhood. You know, that it was a pretty um informal way to do it, but it was a very effective campaign. Um, I don't know whether it had long-lasting results, but it's a a great way to just kinda say, hey, you know, people, pay attention to what you're doing. Um, you you know, that that was the idea behind it. I'm not real familiar with the Rochester Hills campaign and what what they've done up in Rochester Hills.
And and have any of those, those, you know, two or three-step campaigns uh ended up in in solving the problem? Or do they typically typically end up in it with a speed hump anyway?
I, in in Farmington Hills, they they really haven't installed a lot of them and and I work real closely with Mark Saxuski down there. Um, a- and I'm real familiar with their programs, I tend to go back to it. Um, they have not installed a a new installation of speed humps in probably four or five years. Um, it tends to ebb and flow uh as there's more turnover in a neighborhood. Um, meaning as a as homeowners sell and new people move into a neighborhood, it tends to be more of a generational shift. Um, they seem to see this where it picks up quite frequently where where a neighborhood is in a transition where there's a lot of property turnover. Um, until people settle in. Uh, is it effective? I would say so. I- it addresses the issue without. Um, a permanent installation that might have some some downsides with response times and maintenance. Um, the issue is usually a lot of times after they get installed, somebody's not going to like it. Um, something happens with it, you know, whether it be an issue with long-term maintenance. Um, and and there there tends to be some level of dissatisfaction. Years after it's gone or people go, well, I don't understand why this speed hump is here. Nobody's speeding through our neighborhood. And and they forget that 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 device is what's helping address that issue. Um. How many of them have been removed? I I I don't know. That's a, that's a question I I've often asked. You know, whether whether they've been removed. Another thing that we do too is we allow your speed signs in a neighborhood. Where there there radar unit that just displays a driver's speed. Um, it's more of a positive feedback campaign. We limit the feedback speeds at no greater than forty miles an hour. So that it doesn't turn into a high-score game for a lot of motorists. Um, and they don't flash, they don't blink, it's just your speed and it's got, you know, the the listing of whatever their speed is. Now, the nice thing about that is. Most of the systems will record that data and it's available for either the the police department to go and download that data. And they can identify when there actually is a speeding problem in a neighborhood. Or the homeowners association president can go and download that data and go, hey, on Tuesday evenings at seven o'clock. We're always getting somebody going through here at forty-five miles an hour. And then that makes it much easier for selective enforcement for the police department to go out and. Treat an actual issue on a particular day. Um, and it is a positive feedback program to to most motorists.
Yeah, we have a couple. We have a couple of those.
Yeah, we 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 find they're they're fairly effective. The the issue is, is after, after about a year or so, people tend to block them out. Because there really isn't that that enforcement component that goes on with it.
So Bruce, I didn't know if you wanted to talk about the other topic as well and.
Oh, sure.
Where did you want to go with the next steps in regards to this? Um, one suggestion would be to have staff do some additional research and come back with some possible recommendations.
Yeah, that's prob- probably makes sense. I mean, I think we'll also need to look at cost and how, I mean, I, well, I guess we'll have to. So I guess that 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 makes me think of one one more question. So, uh, Alex, how, you know, I know you said you you typically look at this in a. Um, and and, you know, by neighborhood, which totally makes sense because, you know, putting it into one street just shifts the issue to the to the other street. But how 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 far out do you typically have to go? Cuz one thing that's somewhat unique, well, I don't know if it's unique to us. But, you know, we've got Southfield Road, you know, going north-south and then we've got, you know, all these cross streets. And so there's a lot of cut-through traffic that happens to get to, you know, to avoid having to make the turn, for example, on Southfield onto Eleven Mile. Um, so, you know, I I'm just thinking like, i- if you if you put a speed hump on one one street, well, the next street over is still gonna have, you know, uh. More cut-through issues. If you put them on both, then it's gonna shift it to the 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 third street and and so on. So I I guess that what I'm asking is how how far typically do you have to go out until, you know, that that effect kind of wanes and you you have an effective system?
That tha- that's, that's the twenty-thousand-dollar question.
Okay.
Um, a a lot of that is just kind of looking at it. Uh, you know, Lathrip is pretty, pretty dense. What I what I mean dense-wise is you 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 have a lot of. Sublocal roads that branch off of Southfield like like you're saying, or the service drive for six ninety-six. Um, and it is an attractive end. I would say you'd have to go a minimum of three streets. Before you get to that point, you your blocks and the distance there is, I'm gonna guess probably. You know, seven hundred feet, give or take. Um, you know, think about it from a driver's perspective. If you go three blocks, you're you're at about a half a mile. Most people, the backup doesn't get that far. You have to look at it and go, okay, wh- where's the traffic backing up to and where are they going to turn at to avoid that traffic backup? Um, so you kinda look at it and go, I'm the driver that's looking to avoid the problem. How am I going to avoid the problem? I'm gonna turn down the first street that provides me relief. And that's where, that's where you kinda start with your program. Is it real scientific? No, it's not. Um, it's kind of a common sense approach to 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 the problem. Um. The the other end of it is i- is also, once you start doing it, y- you can always go back and you can expand the program. It may not be what you wanna hear right away, but look at it and study it. Um, I, we don't permit the installation of temporary speed humps. But if you guys wanted to experiment with it, it may not be a bad idea to try it as an experiment. Um, it's an option. We don't permit it as as RCOC. But it is something trial, the 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 issue with temporary speed humps is they have to be affixed to the road somehow. Which means you're gonna have to pin it to the rope, driving either a stake-in or pluing them down or adhering them some way. Um, that's, that's something that you guys would have to consider. Um, if you wanted to go that way.
Okay, and it's not, it's, it sounds like um. You know, if if we move ahead and study this further, this is something that you guys would consult us, consult, be consultative with us as as you were with. You know, uh, Farmington and other, and and is there, is that something that's that's a service for from you guys to us?
We we typically wouldn't get involved in it, meaning they're they're not our roads. I mean, we're 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 an available resource by all means. We we partner with with all of our communities. We're more than glad to to offer an opinion, but, you know, Giffords Webster would be, would be a great resource for you guys. Um, the Traffic Improvement Association with Chuck Keller and TIA, they're another great resource. Um, you know, that I know you guys can utilize. Uh, so there's a lot of other avenues that you can go, but we wouldn't necessarily participate because. It, they're they're not our roads. If if you want an opinion or you want somebody to give you an opinion, great. More more than glad to 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 offer that up, but uh, I I look at it as, it's in Oakland County. And a lot of people go, oh, well, Lether Village is doing this, or Farmington Hills is doing this, or Rochester Hills is doing this. So, uh, if it's a great idea, I'm more than glad to take it and add it to my toolbox to use elsewhere. Uh, you know, and if it's a great tool, I'm more than glad to share it with other people that go, hey, this is what Farmington Hills has done and Rochester Hills has done. You know, i- i- it's a great thing, so, but necessarily, no, we would, we wouldn't get involved in it.
Okay, makes sense, makes sense.
So Alex, then when you, when you were saying you, you know, you normally get citizen involvement, you wanna see seventy, you know, seventy-five percent of the residents approved. And that's for your stuff that you guys would do, right?
Correct, yes, that 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 is for anything that that that's installed on an RCOC road.
Okay, okay. But you wouldn't do, you wouldn't be involved with that for us, because those are our roads.
Correct.
Okay.
Right, so we'd have to come up with our own policies and 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 so forth, okay. All right, yeah, and so the other thing that that Cheryl brought up is, you know, when when I was out canvassing, I I talked to several people out in the uh Sunnybrook. Uh, what are the names of those streets, Cheryl? I get them all mixed up. Uh, Morning, Morningside.
Morningside. Circle.
Yeah, so um, we have, we have temporary stop signs there. Um, I think Chief McKee put them out there, you know, trying to c- control the 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 speed. Over there, cuz I know speeding is 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 a big problem and and several of the residents brought up. Uh, the possibility of of uh opening up San Jose, which is currently blocked. And that's, it it opens up, goes into Evergreen and and their thought is that. You know, a lot of people are are wanting to get out to Evergreen and because they can't, they're speeding through the neighborhood to get. Out to Eleven Mile and then eventually over over to Evergreen. So, you know, they they thought, you know. Opening that back up might help alleviate some of the speeding in the in the neighborhood. So, um, I know Scott was, McKee was gonna look into, um, you know, finding out why it was originally closed off. And and uh, you know, so so basically just wanted to see, you know, first, you know, if if it's even feasible as an idea. I mean, is there a, you know, a fatal reason why we would would wouldn't even consider it? Or is it something we can consider? And then if it is something worth considering, then we can bring the residents in and. Um, you know, see what their opinions are, what the opinions are, the people who live, you know, close by there. So, um, Scott McKee, did you find out anything additional?
Uh, no, Bruce, I I've been looking and I have not been able to uh to find anything. Um, maybe I might get with Scott Baker after this meeting and maybe he has some type of information. You know, we've closed off a number of of streets and, you know, put barricades up. Uh, as far as I recall, that that street has been closed since I've been here, which is twenty-five years. Um, you know, my opinion, um, is if we open that road up, I think we're just gonna, we're we're gonna. Get rid of one complaint for a whole nother complaint. So, uh, you know, I I I think we can try to find out why it was originally closed. But it's, again, as far back as I can remember, there has never been an avenue uh or an outlet on Evergreen Road, uh, you know, from the See Later Village. And and, you know, if you look around the city, a lot of our roads are are closed off, especially that east side. Um, all those roads are blocked, uh, you know, going into Southfield. So, uh, for some reason, uh, way back when, they decided they kinda wanted to be. Uh, their own little island, so to speak, and uh, that's kinda the way it's been ever since.
Well, in in part of the stuff that I read in the history of Lathrip Village and the way it was designed was that there were to be no through streets. And it was to be a very kind of enclave-type-type village. So, I mean, I I think that's why, you know, a lot of those streets don't have through to main arteries.
Yeah, Garden, Garden City.
Yeah.
Yeah, just a quick observation. In twenty seventeen, they actually opened up that road. I think that road was either repaved or some construction work was done on it. It was opened up for several months and then it was closed, it was barricaded back up. So I think Scott Baker may have that information. And that was when I was actually, um, yeah, that was two years after I got on council. So I recall there was some sort of construction done on that road.
Yeah, there originally, there was actually a gate there with a lock.
Exactly.
If the fire department needed to get in. And then it was actually barricaded off and, you know, completely, so nobody could get through.
Right.
Um, but it was never, it was never an open-through street that I recall.
Yep.
So that would be. Everyone, uh, I wanted to jump in there to say that, um, believe it or not, my son did go to Southfield Public Schools and he went to McIntyre. And at that time, when he was in kindergarten, which was, Scott, roughly. Twenty-something, no, I'm not that old. It's over fifteen years, I'll put it that way. Um, and it was, it was open, if I'm not mistaken at that time. So, um, and I think that, I don't know who just said it, but I think you're right. When you start opening streets to alleviate the traffic pattern of one street, you're just going to start an issue on another street. And I think that that's something if we really wanna consider, I mean, that's something that we need to bring in all of the residents of that area, I guess. And cuz then you're gonna start asking about, I feel as though you're gonna start asking about the street that's near you. Um, Councilman Ferguson, the streets over there to open those up. Cuz I know the fire department has asked our, and correct me if I'm wrong, uh, Chief McKee, the fire department has asked us to open those streets, didn't they?
Yeah, there's, there's always, uh, there's always an inquiry to to be able to get to, you know, to respond faster, uh, whether it be for their, you know. Southfield residents or Lether Village residents, there's always. Southfield residents or later ability residents. There's always, there's always that, that concern, because we're, we're pretty much blocked off. You're either going to get through on a twelve mile, eleven mile, uh, Lincoln and then Margate going, uh, you know, going east and west. So, um, there's always that, uh, there's always that inquiry for sure.
Right.
So I know you just, just jumped on Kelly. I, I said that kind of when we brought, we brought it up, that, uh, you know, we're just talking about whether or not it's e- even a feasible idea to take to the next level. And, and, you know, if so, we obviously bring in all the, the, the residents in that area. So.
Okay, well, then I apologize for repeating.
No, no, it goes, it, it good, good to say it twice. So we don't, we don't create an unnecessary panic.
Okay, well, I was just trying to see what's our action items now? Where do we go from here? Uh, we kicked this around a little bit for that. I'm sorry. Um, Alex, I did not get to meet you and hear your presentation on the speed bumps, because I was the one that asked, uh, about the speed bump, seeing that at exactly seven thirty-eight every morning on Santa Barbara, there is a mad rush for six ninety-six that you can hear coming through the window. So I was, I'm the ones, I apologize for that. If you have something, send me, that would be perfect.
Yeah, uh, my presentation was more, um, you know, some, some of the pros and cons in our experiences that we've had at RCOC. But a lot of the data that was linked in, in the agenda that was sent out is covers quite a little bit of, of what I discussed. Um, whoever put the agenda together did, did a very good job of getting some, some supporting information there. So, a lot of that information is already there.
Well, give her a star. Well, thank you. Um, so like I was saying, what's our next steps? What's the actual items there, Mayor Pro Tim?
Uh, well, Cheryl was talking a little bit earlier about having the, the administration kind of look at next steps and, um, you know, how we would, you know, begin to do, you know, to study the issue a little bit further. Um, I mean, one, one, one thought Cheryl might be to talk to the city managers of, of those two other cities that, you know, we use, we looked at the materials of and see, see how they, they got started and what, what worked for them and what, what didn't work. And we can, uh, you know, maybe s- circle back at our next study session and see, see, you know, if we've got an idea of how to move forward.
Okay. Sounds like a plan. Any other questions or concerns regarding the streets and traffic controls? Hearing none, we can go over to what I found very humorous, um, tower lease agreement. And I found it interesting just because of the major change in that one, but I'll let you, uh, introduce that one.
Yeah, thanks, thanks a lot, Alex. I appreciate it.
Oh, thank you, Alex. I'm so sorry. It's nice meeting you and thank you so much.
No, my, my pleasure. If you guys have any questions, feel free to send me an email. I'll be glad to, glad to follow up with you guys.
Thank you. It's very helpful.
Thanks, Alex. Good job. Appreciate it.
Have a lovely evening.
You too. Thanks.
Well, the, the tower, um, is back. And I don't know if you recall, what, two years ago now, maybe? Um, we had received an offer for at least buyout for it of approximately three hundred thousand. And now they're, they've upped it to eight hundred thousand, which, um, at least gets your attention. Um, so I, I spelled out some of the details in regards to what those options are. Um, essentially what they're saying is that with the change in the industry and with, um, T, T-Mobile, um, making their acquisitions, they're deactivating a number of the towers. And one of the things that makes the one that we have less attractive is that they, uh, their rate for increasing, um, through the carrier rates that are on the tower is lower than the rates that we, our increase allows for. So it is a negative um, impact on their financials if they keep the current, um, measurements in place relative to the lease. So what they have proposed are two options. One is the, um, S, reducing what they call the escalation rate to ten percent, which is essentially two percent per year, uh, reducing the actual rent amount. Um, they said initially two hundred, but they would be more than willing to negotiate that to one hundred, a fifteen hundred dollar signing bonus. And then, um, looking, I put the spreadsheet that shows what those different rates are. What those rates don't consider, however, is the, the actual subscribers on the tower. And we have, I think it's Metro PCS. And their, um, subscription rate to us is approximately twenty thousand a year. So over twenty years, that would be about four hundred thousand. And over thirty years, that would be six hundred thousand. So, essentially as a level buyout, if you look at those, those total dollar amounts relative to that. And then the option two is the actual buyout of eight hundred and twenty-five thousand. And they would ask for a sixty-year term easement relative to having access to the, um, tower on our grounds. We would no longer collect those lease payments from the carriers, which I just mentioned, is about twenty thousand a year. So they wanted to get some direction. Um, they would like to act on this quickly as soon as our next meeting, if there is a decision by you. So I was bringing it to your attention to find out what, if anything, you wanted to do. And also I asked about the, um, electronic vehicles, because that was an issue that came up before. And, um, they said, actually, um, with the increase in the electronic vehicles, they're using less of the towers. Because now they can use those on the five G, what they call micro towers, which are, um, can be placed on much smaller instruments and buildings.
Yeah, I guess maybe I should dive in first. Excuse me. So initially, when this came up, I made the statement and we're well into it now. So we see that the big three for GM and Chrysler really want to try to be an electronic company. I've said that. I've been saying that for the last four years, right? So this, this, um, this proposal doesn't match up. And the reason why I say that is most vehicles are now moving to, um, cellular access within vehicles. You're gonna need extra towers for that, number one. Number two, when you reflash, on many occasions, when you have to take your car into the dealership, where you get an update of a, of a software within your car, they're now doing reflash in the cloud. Reflash in the cloud requires a cell, a cell tower. Cell towers are very limited in, in, uh, in, uh, our area. So if we depart from owning this tower, I think we're missing a, a really good financial opportunity, because within the next five years, you'll see the long and the short of wireless communication. Um, you know, uploading software within the cloud. We're talking vehicles. We're not just talking about your cellphone. I mean, iOS updates are done in the cloud. A lot of cellphone issues will be coming up, not issues, but opportunities will be coming up for this city. And if we do own this tower, I think it's, it will be a plus. So we need to think long-term here and think down the road, five to ten years. We should control our own destiny, as I've been stating for the last four years.
So let me answer this question, because you're saying to stay up to own this tower, but I, if they're leasing it from us, I don't see that, or am I mistaken in reading this? That we're not selling anything to them? They're just releasing them out of their lease, there's a lease buyout, right?
Go ahead, Cheryl.
Uh, that's how I understand it. We own the land.
Right.
And have the, the towers there and they're leasing the space on the tower, essentially.
Right, so it's, it's their, it's their tower. They're just leasing the land to have the tower.
Right.
And, and then they lease out the tower to others.
Right. So we still, we would still own it.
You would still own the property, but
Yeah.
the tower, you, you would no longer get the monthly rent from, from, uh, excuse me, American Tower, any of the, any of the other co-located facilities that are on that tower. At one point, I think we did have four, uh, different carriers on that tower. So, you know, that twenty thousand dollars a year that Cheryl's referencing was, you know, and Pam can confirm this, but I think it was probably closer to sixty or eighty thousand dollars a year, just from the co-located ones on top of what we already, what we received from American Tower. So, you know, my, my position, my belief is, I tend to agree with you. And I, I don't think that the, the need or use for cell towers is going to go anywhere. I think it's only going to increase. And, you know, we've seen a demand for, you know, other providers looking to locate in Lathrip. Uh, they wanted to put one at the police station, uh, behind, and one behind City Hall. So, um, yeah, I think maintaining that is, is a lucrative, is a lucrative position for the city.
So maybe, I, I'm, I'm trying to say it in a different way. If, and the fact is that, and then I'm, I'm thinking of it more or less like a car. You know, it, it's where this person doesn't want this lease anymore and they want to buy, they want to buy out of the lease, but the lease can, that car can go to someone else. Is that not the same? You know, that's the way that I'm looking at it. You understand what I mean? Scott Baker, you understand what I mean?
Yeah, I think that, that's, I mean, they're essentially saying that, all right, we'll buy, we'll buy ourselves out of this lease. We're then free to do with, with this tower, whatever we choose.
Yes, I guess that's where I was trying to kind of, okay, I got you. I, I, you just, you, you answered my question then, in that one sentence.
And the sixth, they, they, they want a sixty-year term easement, right? So they just, what does that mean? That they want to use, they'll be able to use it for sixty years and with no payments, right?
Well, that, that, that would be their buyout. They'd give us eight hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars and they get used to that land for sixty years.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I guess the only, the only, uh, just to play the devil's advocate for a second, the only thing that, that, the only concern I guess I would have about possibly not taking the, 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 the buyout is, you know, they're, they're talking here how they, they, they got rid of thirty thou- thirty-five thousand towers, you know, um, in this past year. So, uh, you know, with the constant leaps in technology, you know, is something going to come fifteen years from now that's going to render, you know, this tower obsolete? In which case, you know, we would have been able to bring in, you know, more money had we taken the buyout versus, versus, you know, just going on and leasing. So.
So I, I'm not sure that that's necessarily something that we have the expertise to answer among our group. And so perhaps there's someone that could provide us with that information. And, and what I might suggest is maybe not a cell provider or whatever, but maybe we get somebody who's good with technology. You know, who maybe works at a nonprofit or like one of the universities and ask them what they're seeing happen or, or one of the consultants. Because I just, I mean, that's, that's a kind of the burden the hand situation with the buyout versus what we might possibly earn. And I don't, I don't think we have the expertise to, to really call that.
Right.
And so, um, are you willing to take that on to find the nonprofit? That would be the technology expert.
Well, I was actually thinking, um, there is a nonprofit statewide organization and Rob Thompson, who works at Wayne State, um, could definitely connect us with someone who might be able to give us a little bit of a, of a kind of a landscape and, and get some info. And they don't have a dog in the fight. You know what I mean? Like,
Right.
They did a survey, um, for the entire state, looking at where there were deserts when they were trying, um, internet deserts, when they were trying to build up a, a more broad-based, um, access to internet. So they, they could probably give us some pretty good insight. So I'd be happy to provide his information to Cheryl. And while he may not be the expert, he could definitely connect us to someone.
I like that idea.
Now Cheryl, what, when, did they, did they give us a deadline in terms of when they wanted to know?
October twelfth.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, it might, might, might see if, it might be worth it to see if we can get an extension on that, being saying we want to research it a little bit. And that way, maybe we can, um, you know, get this person and have them at our next meeting.
Okay.
Good idea.
And, and just to clarify, Scott Baker, so I was looking at the original agreement. So they are leasing the ground from us. They own the tower.
Correct. They own the tower and the equipment there. They're, they're simply leasing the property that it's located at.
Right. So if the tower is deactivated.
No one can use it then.
Right.
Right. That was, that was, that was my point, you know.
That's what, that was kind of my roundabout back in question to earlier. So.
Right. So what, what happens if ten years down the road, there's a big jump in technology and then it's,
Right.
you know, the tower is not needed and we've lost that opportunity to have pulled in that money. So.
I got a pretty good feeling that, uh, I got a pretty good feeling, Bruce, that there, this isn't the last we hear them, if we tell them no, uh.
I would agree.
It's not going to go fifteen years before.
Right.
From America Tower.
I agree. I mean, look at, look at the numbers they're trying to buy us, trying to throw at us and really think about where the technology's going.
Right. But my point, my point is, Ian, tho- those thirty-five thousand other tower places where those towers were being, the land was being leased, we're saying the same thing. So, which, which is why I think Don's suggestion is great.
Yeah, yeah.
Get a sense of where, where the industry is going and, you know,
Yep.
whether or not they're predicting that we're going to need more towers, less towers, you know?
Yeah, I agree totally.
And the big thing with that, Bruce, I think a lot of those are duplicate towers. So where, where they, where, you know, there might have been one within a, a quarter mile of another one, two different providers. And, and now that they've acquired Sprint, uh, you know, again, Lathrip is, we, we don't have another tower. Uh, we're already probably underserved for the area and the number of users in the area.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, usually cell service, usually cell service would like overlap. So in case you get out of a range of one tower, you're picking up another one. So you have continuous service in some areas like West Bloomfield, and you guys know this, even Suzie will tell you. When she's driving home, she automatically loses communication at a specific point. And that's because there's no overlap there. There is a, there is a limitation in tower access. So we need to think about that. I'm just giving you my little expert opinion based on industry standards.
That makes sense. I mean, that was the whole reason why they are trying to put a tower also at the police station, because we still have that lag. So that's another thing that is concerning, because if you're at, um, this, at City Hall, you sometimes will get a lag in your, um, phone service. So I think that what we should do is exactly what, uh, Councilwoman Medley, uh, uh, said. And try to arrange where we have someone who's more of an expert on this to come and talk to us, so we can make a very educated and informed decision.
Yep, appreciate that.
Thank you, Don.
Thank you. And I would have said, if you were interested, that you would authorize me to attempt to negotiate a higher purchase price. So.
Yeah, the only thing that we, um, would want at this point, just like what Bruce was saying, um, is that just to extend the time if possible.
Okay.
Okay, before, before we continue, I think Don is a little frozen. So it may be a software issue going on there.
Or it could be your internet, not ours.
Oh. Oh, there you go.
Thank you.
All right. I'll say, thank you.
Thank you.
Information, um, Councilmember Medley.
Um, okay, so next up is a discussion of cannabis, the draft application, the scoring criteria. Who would like to introduce that?
I'm going to let Suzie take this one.
No way, man. We talked about you taking the lead on this. Um, as requested, um, attached in your packet was the, uh, the draft application for, uh, cannabis applications. Um, we have, I, I mean, I personally think it's, uh, pretty solid as written, although there does need to be significant, um, discussion still on the exact point criteria. Um, we, we did, as, uh, as mentioned in the cover memo, uh, we assigned one point per item, uh, but really that was just for the sake of, the sake of ease. Hold on.
And while she's sneezing, I'll, I'll continue that. Uh, they don't put a whole lot of faith in stock in the, the actual points right now, because like, like she was starting to explain it, those were primarily placeholders. Um, until, until we make sure that we have all the criteria and that we do want to have ideally would have a nice even number that's, uh, easy for the, the scorers to calculate and everyone to figure out. So.
Thank you, Scott. I did, um, I did the survey, the survey that we discussed, uh, I guess it was last week, right? Um, the survey is out there. Um, so far, we've gotten, uh, thirteen responses. Um, it's out, you know, uh, emails were sent to, uh, the, the main boards and commissions. It's out on the webs, it's right front and center on the website. Um, I believe it's been shared on our social medias as well. Um, and it will be in the uh, e-newsletter, uh, for this Friday. Uh, so, so far, like I said, we've had thirteen responses. Uh, we've had some pretty decent feedback. Uh, the consistent responses are, uh, that we should make investments, uh, to the police department. Um, improvements to the play structures, um, and very broadly fix the infrastructure. um, and very broadly fix the infrastructure. Um, I I would say those are the the main categories. There have been some other, some other input. While it's valuable, um, it doesn't really fit into the the capital improvement, um, sort of realm of things, right? Like more generally, like provide more services for the residents, which is excellent, but it's, you know, not that one big public, but that one big expenditure. So that's kind of where we're at in a nutshell, and I just, uh, like to hear your thoughts on the application.
So, oh, go ahead.
Nope, go ahead. You're fine, Don. Go ahead.
Oh, um, there were just literally the the work that you all had done and you've put into this. I mean, it was, it was impressive going through really, really looking at some things. Um, I did want to just ask, um, there's some errors, like typos, types of things, and I know it's a draft. So I didn't know when the time came, if you wanted, you know, how we should provide that feedback as well. And then there were two main questions I had, um, as as I was looking over it. And forgive me, I'm I'm not as familiar with the the different sections. But there was one section when we're giving.
I think every day you should just look in the mirror and say, hello gorgeous. Cause you will, you will if you're wearing this shoe, I can.
What was that?
I have no idea. I clicked on something wrong. I'm sorry. I'm so sorry. I clicked, I'm like trying to, I'm splitting my screen.
I was so excited, because you were telling me I should just look in the mirror every day and say hello gorgeous.
I do it every day. No, it's okay. Sorry, I'm so sorry. I was clicking, splitting my screens apart, so.
No, 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 that's fine. So the the first thing was there was, you had two different mentions of parking. So under section five, community benefits, we had a mixed-use parking structure. Um, I think it means AKA and not Allah Ferndale DOT disassociated from building was twenty points. And again, I appreciate that the point totals aren't, aren't set. But then there was another question where we are also awarding, um, improvements due to parking. So you had two parking criteria.
Yeah, that was on page fifty-five.
Yeah, and that was because we, uh, one of the things is is onsite parking at the facility. And then the other one would be, um, the Allah or AKA, uh, Ferndale Lot is a, is an off-site parking facility that would meet the, you know, that's one of the big needs the cities have has is with respect to other businesses is parking. Um, it it's also something that the city is going to have to address with the Southfield, eventual Southfield Road redevelopment. So that is not necessarily a, an onsite parking, uh, award of points. So that, that's why those two are separated.
Okay, because I wa- I was interested in the fact that we'd be looking at at a parking garage, because that did not seem to fit the 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 village aspect for that.
It's actually the, uh, the parking, a mixed-use parking structure with first floor retail.
Mixed use, okay.
Yeah, that that is part of the Village Center concept that's been around for a while now, so.
Okay.
Someone wants to build that, that certainly would be a a benefit to the city.
Okay, and then there was one other, um, question I had regarding, um, the point levels for someone building a new building versus rehabbing a building. And so there's fifteen points for new construction or substantially new construction over fifty percent. Um, I substantially isn't necessarily defined for me as a quantitative.
That I think we still.
Sorry, that's.
We're still refining that section too, I think.
Yeah, and and that was, again, we we talked about this a bit last week, um, that, or maybe it was the meeting prior to that. But that's primarily to try to level the playing field between, uh, property owners that have recently made improvements to their property in comparison to those that are anticipating making improvements, uh, specifically for for the this particular development. So it's, it's trying to, uh, you know, equal that playing field a little bit for for, you know, and not punishing developers or property owners that have already improved their properties. You know, proactively.
And would, would we offer points for for someone building a new building?
Yeah, that's, um, that would be the, the, the one that you just read, improvement or substantial improvement.
Over, yeah, over the fifty percent.
Fifty percent.
All right. And then I had one other question, and I I was really glad that you said what you said about not paying attention to, um, the various point totals, because at the very end of the document, it says building improvements include either low-impact development, green roof. I just want to be sure as we're going through, there there were a couple of places where I thought people could stack the system. Like they get a point for doing this and for this and for this. And so just seeing a little more specificity when it comes to the point total, I think will be very informative and helpful.
Yeah, like I said, those are more placeholders at this point. As we were coming up with ideas for for different point categories, we, you know, we were just throwing random point assignments down there. A lot of it was based upon our level of excitement over the idea, so, uh, those, those will be on your note.
I do think, though, I I'm not entirely convinced that we'll be able to say that there's a specific, um, one specific total, um, point. I, I mean, I think it it's, there's a possibility, it could just be a range. I mean, there was one, and I'm trying to find.
Well, those ones that we just read, the ones that are two per improvement or five per improvement, obviously those we don't know how many improvements someone could suggest, so that might just keep in increasing the totals in that area.
And that's.
So it's hard to give a maximum.
And there was another one, I think we specifically say, I think it's in the community benefits for, you know, other benefits that we haven't listed.
Yeah, we didn't want to limit, we didn't want to limit what, what benefits the city potentially could receive based upon this list. So we did want to encourage others to, uh, you know, applicants to kind of think outside the box and and you know, let's, let's see what ideas that they have that we may not even have thought of at this point. So we do want to have the opportunity to to award points for for that type of creativity.
And how, and how would the awarding of points for that kind of thing work, Scott? Because I could, I could foresee a situation where you know, somebody comes up with an idea and we say, you know, that's, you know, six points. And now somebody can test that saying, well, we're, we were doing this, and this seems like it's a much more intensive your project, but they're, we're only getting five points, they're getting, you know, you know what I mean? Since it's not stated in advance, how do we?
Yeah, and again, we, we haven't, uh, the points have not been finalized yet. So what I anticipate we'll probably see is that there'll be a, a cap on the number of of points that you could earn in that category. You know, and and maybe not necessarily quantify it by the value of the improvement or or the tangible benefit, but uh, simply the number of benefits that, you know, if they're, someone's proposing two or three separate, you know, community benefit ideas, then that they would, uh, acquire points for each one of those ideas and and, you know, possibly max out on that section. But tho- those are things we're, you know, we're meeting again next week to to kind of try and finalize this. So those are things that I think we're going to focus on in our, in our next discussion.
And and also, Bruce, I, that's part of the reason why, um, I feel it's important that that survey that we, that we've put out there, that it's tied very specifically to the capital improvements plan, which is, you know, as I mentioned last week, it's capital improvements plan is tied to the master plan, which is tied to the zoning, you know, it's all legally, you know, bound together. And so, you know, if someone, if that, you know, if that example comes into play and and someone says, well, I'm doing this, and but I've got this other idea, I would say, look to the master plan to determine whether or not, you know, is this something we even, you know, we're striving towards, right?
Yeah, makes sense. Um, question on, on section seven, where we were just talking about, you know, improvements within the last twelve months. Uh, just throwing this out there as a question, is twelve months long enough? Is eighteen months more applicable, or you think twelve months is?
I think that's kind of a fluid position based upon when, when this, um, opens up for for applications. So, you know, if if this doesn't open up for applications until, you know, sometime next year, then, um, you know, obviously twelve months might not be appropriate. But we also, you know, and we do understand too, that there hasn't been a whole lot of development going on in the last, uh, you know, eighteen months, just with everything going on in the world, that, uh, you know, that it might be necessary to to extend that out a little bit.
Yeah.
We haven't had a whole lot of development, improvement in the city.
Yeah, and then another question with respect to the scores, like on the last page, and there were a few other places in here. You know, so, and I'll just use this one as an example, um, you know, so it says distance from, from the above is provided property line to property line and prepared and sealed by licensed surveyor and engineer, you know, basically showing that they're not in violation of the 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 green zone, and we assign a point for that. But shouldn't that just be something that's required as a side, as a, as opposed to a point? For that?
It is required, but we did make a decision to award a point for that, uh, based simply on the fact that it's signed and done by a licensed surveyor. We, we do anticipate that we're probably going to get some people that draw these up themselves and and use Google Maps, um, to to identify. So if someone's going to go to the extent of hiring a a surveyor or an engineer to prepare that document, that that's something we feel should be rewarded.
Got it.
So I got one ready, Bruce, while you're, while you're talking. So when we're looking at the security plan on section six, it seemed everything was very focused on, you know, central, small, those kinds of things. I guess I would like to see an overall comprehensive plan where these are components of that and also kind of a deterrent strategy. And and so it was, it was very much focused on like physical, they have an armed robbery procedure, those types of things. But, um, where you have an armed robbery procedure, do you have an overall strategy that is a deterrent to armed robbery? Do you have a security expert onsite or consulting? Um, you know, just, just something, the same way I wouldn't want someone drawing up their survey based on a Google map, I don't want somebody developing, you know, an armed robbery surveillance or or, you know, um, preventative measure without having some level of expertise. So I would like to see who they employ in that professional capacity as a, as a, um, a consultant or as an expert.
That's a good point.
Yeah, just a quick, sorry, just a quick observation, sorry to cut anybody off. So I'm still looking at this building improvement, right? So I look at the last two bullets where it says, let me just read them up. Building improvements include energy efficiency, water recycling. You're giving two points on that. Building improvements include other lower impact, uh, development techniques such as green roofs, solar panels, electric vehicle charging, uh, five points for that. I think this is kind of flipped. So wouldn't you want to put the energy efficiency, um, together with the electric vehicle charging and the solar panel charging and give that five points? And then the supplemental, um, efficiency such as, um, roofs. So, um, green roofs and then maybe landscaping or or, um, uh, water irrigation as five points. I know you don't have water irrigation, but it seems like the point system for those two have flipped. They should be the opposite, where you give, you give more points for true energy efficiency such as lighting, such as, you know, charging stations, such as, um, you know, the solar array or solar gridding. Do you guys agree with that?
Yeah, like I said, I, you know, we haven't finalized the actual points yet, so, uh, those numbers are are subject to change. We were, again, just kind of looking for, for things that we could encourage or try to uh, encourage an applicant to to include as part of their proposed plan, uh, to be more energy efficient, to to be more self-sustaining. You know, it it use some more low-impact type of, uh, development procedures.
Right. I'm not saying it's wrong. I'm just saying cluster it accordingly and then, you know, score it accordingly.
Yeah, or we might even end up breaking them out, um, you know, as as separate categories, so that there is, you know, it's easier to score uh, a point apiece versus, you know, all or nothing, and like a five-point type thing.
Okay.
Yeah, same, same comment that I made earlier on the, you like with, uh, section four, the business plan, like, you know, or were they, you know, one example is types of products proposed, one point, uh, 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 again, is that's something that deserves a point as opposed to that should just be a requirement, those kinds of things? Just curious.
Don't remember how that one actually got in there.
Can you repeat it? Bruce, can you repeat that? Sorry.
Uh, there was a page, on page fifty-one, there was, there was a point for types of products proposed. I mean, it seems like, seems like.
No, for the, for the business plan, you mean? Cause that's not those, that's not necessarily something that's would be necessarily be spelled out in their business plan. A a normal business plan.
Okay.
Right? So, um, we were just kind of thinking about, like, what all would we want to see?
I think we looked up, uh, you know, we, we just typed into Google, what is a cannabis business plan? And we're like, okay, we're going to see a lot of this document come in. How can we differentiate from, you know, from that? And and again, reward someone that has gone above and beyond what, uh, you know, the low-hanging fruit. So and that, that could be, I don't remember exactly why. Uh, we said types of product. I think that's pretty evident what their product type is going to be.
Isn't it, um, like, are they going to be selling, you know, are are they only going to be selling flour? Or are they also going to be selling, you know, all the rest of it? But I guess all the rest of it, you know, or like, are they going to sell like paraphernalia too? I don't know. I don't quite remember. My notes aren't that great for that one.
Are you asking us or are you just speculating?
I'm just kind of, I'm using mental steam.
Okay, just a quick question. Um, sorry, Don, you were going to say something? I'll, I'll go after you. Okay, just a quick question, uh, to Scott Baker, or even Jill, maybe Jill will answer this. So I see, um, zero points for no improvement. So if a business, and we're just not even talking marijuana, if a business is moving into Lathrop, obviously that building has to be move-in ready, meaning they have done something to get it prepared. In this case, don't you think, uh, a company deserves at least a point for getting it ready, even though they don't make major ren- renovations?
We have a lot of businesses in Lathrop that they have acquired and moved in and don't do anything to get it ready, so.
No, I'm saying that they obviously have to do something, not just plop in, right? Which I understand what you're saying, Scott.
Yeah, I mean, y- you would think, but yeah, some of them, they do, they haven't done a whole lot.
There, I I'd say that there's, I I agree with Scott. There's plenty that have just opened up shop and I, you know, they changed the sign.
Okay, all right.
It was, that's part of the reason behind giving the points for those improvements that were within.
Right.
The starting period, so.
Got it. Okay, just wanted to clarify that. Thanks. So what are the next steps here? I mean, we've got a pretty good draft and, you know, we, do we need to tweak and then finalize here?
So yeah, if there's, if there's specific feedback, um, send it to to myself or Jill or Suzie or Cheryl or all four of us, uh, because like I said, we are going to meet next week. Uh, again, to kind of, to go over the survey results and kind of try to hammer out these points. You know, like I said, these were just placeholders, or that, and we do have a, a few other revisions that we do need to clean up, like Dawn pointed out, to some of the typos and stuff that we just didn't catch when we went through it. So, so if you have anything, um, please try to get it to us before the end of this week. Cause we would like, we would like to bring this back to council, uh, if it's completed at the, at the regular meeting at the end of the month.
Okay.
And I'm, um, gonna put the link to the, the community benefits and capital improvement plan survey, um, here in the chat, if you have not already done it. Please, please provide me your feedback as soon as possible. Um, the, so we didn't, we don't have a specific end date for this survey, but, um, would like to get as much of it incorporated into, um, the next draft, you see.
And so then what will happen, Scott, is basically we'll bring it to council and we'll vote, and then it'll be released into the wild.
So there's still two steps that need to take place and and the first is um. And we can have a discussion about the second step here today if we want to. But uh, so the first step would be to complete this, these documents, it's got really flushed out here. Um, so what we will will have to do, first step will be to complete this application and scoring matrix. Uh, and there's a, there's a resolution that will be presented to council for adoption that that accepts these and sets these as as our scoring. And as our application form, the second step that still needs to be addressed is uh, it needs to be determined when. Uh, city would would be opening up to accept the application period, so that's something that uh. You know, again, there's, you know, we've kind of talked about it amongst ourselves and I I don't recall if we brought it up in front of council before. I've gotten any feedback from council on that, but but we would like to ideally, uh, if, you know, if this is what council wants to move this forward. Then the next step would be to to, yeah, pick that date when we'll start accepting the application period.
So is that just a result, is that something that we would bring then to the next council meeting to to pick a date? So to approve this and to set the date?
So that would be, that's a separate resolution. So like I said, we haven't, uh, you know, we've kind of discussed the beginning of the year as a potential, it makes sense to to open this up at the beginning of the year. You know, get through the holiday season, get through the election. And then, cause this is going to take a lot of staff time to to process and review these, so.
Right, you're saying to to open the application in January as opposed to open it November one?
Correct.
Right, so that's something that that as a resolution, we we could pass at the same time as, or we could vote on at the same time as.
Right.
As the other resolution.
Right, but if you're, I mean, that would be, we would need some, I would need some direction from council to be able to prepare that resolution. It's not, I mean, it would be something that, um, you know, give me some some dates and what's what you're looking at. And and we could have something for the next meeting uh as part of the package for consideration.
Um, I thought that we were gonna be um looking at this to uh for a resolution um in October. And I could swear we did already talk about the fact that it wouldn't be into January, so.
Like I said, I can't remember if we did talk about it or not. I know that um Jill, Suzie, Cheryl, myself talked about it at one of our our sessions, we were working on this. But I don't recall if uh we have gotten any directive from council on that.
So I don't, I I would like to offer up, I would like to um have a resolution um to approve this. Um, process at the next council meeting and I would also like to have a real resolution at that point in time to open this up for November one. I think that we have delayed an incredibly long time through this process. And I think there's been adequate time for feedback. And so I would like us to go ahead and move forward with a res- resolution to offer this up on November one.
I think that we need to get through the the checklist first and and see whether or not we're gonna even approve the checklist and see what has to be on there. I don't agree with November one at all. I mean, that's just mine, you know, I know I'm just one person, but I don't, I won't, and I won't, I won't vote on that one either, I'll tell you that ahead of time.
So what, so so let me ask that, so what what's the, so so let's, let's say we have the the resol- the resolution. For um the scoring matrix on the on the eighteenth. Um, and what what steps need to happen between the eighteenth? And then starting the application. So I know Scott, you said, you know, it makes sense to, or you thought it made sense to to start the application process. You know, on January first or at the beginning of the, beginning of the year. What has to happen from the 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 time that a potential resolution for the scoring system is approved? And the time that that applications would would start coming in. So so I, what I'm trying to get at is how much time does the city need, you know, to prepare themselves, you know, for that application process? Wh- wh- what's your guess of an appropriate, you know, timeframe?
I mean, I I don't wanna, I mean, Cheryl or Suzie are probably better ones to answer that question. I mean, as far as uh legal requirements, there there really isn't any legal requirement uh for a a timeframe between when. It's it's simply gonna be how long it takes for for staff to implement those uh those forms. And then also um, you know, the the availability of who's gonna be receiving them and who's gonna be reviewing them. Uh, given all the other things that are, you know, gonna be going on in the city at this time. So that that I'll kind of deflect that one to to Cheryl or Suzie.
Yes, let me re, let me redirect that to to Cheryl, since you're the, you're the one who ultimately has to implement this process. Prove and and to uh um, you know, make it happen, so.
Having never done this before is a little bit difficult to speculate on what would be required. Um, I I only know through hearsay and watching a couple of their meetings in Pontiac. It took a tremendous amount of effort on their part to be prepared enough and running to accept the applications. Let alone process them. And um, I don't know if we've really nailed down the specifics of the process. Um, we have kind of highlights, but you know, details in terms of who takes the application. And you know, but who takes, who handles it next and what part of that is handled by who? Um, those inter- intricate details have not been fleshed out entirely. We have a a bird's eye view of it, but not really in depth that I would be comfortable with. So um, having said that, I mean, if you say you want to start November first, we would do what we have to do to get that process in place. Um, is that ideal? Maybe not. Um, but that's what I understand, the opening period for the applications is thirty days. So um, so that would basically give you the month of November um for that to happen.
We also have the entire month of October at this point, it's October fourth. And so we would know at this point if that was our target date for the opening of of the application, that we could open it on November one. And then we could review them and have those decisions made, you know, at the first of December.
I just don't think that, I think that's putting a lot of stress on our administration and our staff to try to get that open by uh, to do this by November first. Who's reviewing the um applications or you just, you're saying just collect them in November first?
And then that's part of November to 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 review them.
Right, so we don't even know who's gonna be, I mean, we don't know who's gonna review them and as what Cheryl was saying, I just feel like this is rushed. I mean, personally, I think that if we do it on the first, we're not, are we have, we're not gonna have a council meeting on the first, right? We usually don't the day before an election. Right?
Also not our job to, part of the the process that we've put in place here is is that there'll be review and then recommendations made to council.
Right, but I'm going somewhere with this, so just give me two seconds with that. So we won't have an election on, I mean, a um.
Also meeting.
Meeting on the first normally, if we, you know, decide on that. So that means that we would have one more or, yeah, one more meeting as a whole on the eighth. And then we would sit a new council three weeks after that. And I think that just this whole process is gonna be a lot on a brand new council also. And then, I mean, honestly, what is the the entire rush on it? I just think that we need to flush out what the the uh points are gonna be or what the application, the points are gonna be. How the staff is gonna set, be set up to receive them. I just think that it needs to be a little bit more timing and I think that's a lot of stress being put on our administration. Especially with them also trying to get a election together.
I'm gonna say one more thing that I feel is 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 accurate, is this process has not been rushed. This process has been going on for eighteen months at least. And, you know, I started with Ian and Salim in doing the reviews and doing all of that. What has happened here at the end of the process has been an incredible amount of slowdown. And a lot more debate and a lot more discussion after the decision had already been made. And so I don't feel that I'm rushing anything, but I will also say that, you know, Ian is going off of city council. You know, I'll be leaving, part of the reason that that you and Bruce, you know, talked to me about even serving on council was the fact that I had done a lot of research about this. So my perspective isn't that this is rushed. My perspective is that we'd be tidying it up and finishing up what was started with the folks who have the most experience. Prior to a brand new council being seated.
Yeah, and let me just piggyback off of that because.
You don't want it to be next, actually.
I I don't want to put into your time, Ian.
Sorry, no, go ahead.
Okay, um, I just wanted to offer that I think it's um, I, and I understand that this seems like it's excruciatingly long. Um, the process, but it's really important that we're very careful. Uh, we took a good amount of time to research and prepare the ordinance language. It's just as important that we are, maybe even more so, cause now this is where the rubber hits the road, so to speak.
Right.
Where we want to make sure that the application is correct, that our scoring criteria and the points that we're allocating are reasonable and fair. And um, you know, uh, we checked all of our own boxes as well. But I think it's also really important to remember that we should have this process completely solidified before we open up applications. Because if we don't, then the people who are applying won't know what they're applying for. And they won't know exactly what they could be getting points for and what the exact process is gonna be. And that's really a disservice to them, to expect them to in three weeks turn around and begin to file their application. So I think that's an, it's just another reason why we want to have the whole process buttoned up and complete. From start to finish before we open it up so that everybody knows what's expected and um what to expect along the way.
Yeah, so really, we're at the final mile and this is a parallel path. So uh, Scott and Jill, we're gonna need to know the timeline as you guys review to figure out if the point system is gonna take you two to three weeks. And then Cheryl, we're gonna need to know because, you know, it really is that parallel path. We need to understand who will be accepting those applications and who will review within those thirty days. So I don't think we're rushing it, uh, Kelly. Because as as uh Dawn mentioned, there has been a slowdown, we've been more than patient. We're not saying let's rush rush through it, but we're at the point now where we have to make a decision and take and complete that final mile. To make a decision to to do those parallel paths.
And I agree that you, I agree that um we need to uh move forward. But as Jill just said, and I'm really falling back on the planners, um, you know, what she just said. I really think we all need to step back and listen to what she just said and listen to even what um Cheryl said. Because what we're saying, what we want, you have other people that have to have their hand in this also, and we want to do it right. But like I said, I know that I I and I'm gonna say it over again, I think that we should take our time to go through this. And I know that it, you know, we've done a lot of um, um, we've already done a lot of legwork. It just looks, it sounds to me, and this is my opinion, that we're trying to do something that's really fast. And at this point, just like what Jill's saying, that it, we should be much more meticulous. And I don't want to put that type of pressure on our administration and staff.
Right, so it it sounds like to me, to me, there's two issues here. It's the 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 first issue is as as Dawn and and Ian just said, is just the the. You have the the scoring matrix and then there's all sorts of s- of stuff that has to be figured out once, w- w- once and if that's approved. To get to the point where we're starting to take applications. So I guess the first question is, and and I'm not even gonna guess what the answer is, I'll let Jill and Scott say and Suzie say. You know, first, are you comfortable? It seems like we've got a a a good draft, you're meeting next week, you know, are you guys comfortable that you can, we can get to a a final? Um, uh, you know, scoring matrix by the eighteenth. And then second, you know, I I guess I would be comfortable with the the start date being pushed out a little bit further. You know, so that the, all those other administrative details can get ironed out, you know, in the in the interim to get before the application process started. So I think there's, there's two distinct steps here, but it sounds to me like they could both be, depending, depending on the answer from Scott, Jill and. Um, Suzie, that they could both be taken care of via resolution in the October eighteenth meeting.
Yeah, I I and I do think, you know, I'm I'm pretty confident that we'll have the scoring and the application finalized before before the meeting on the eighteenth. But uh, just, you know, let's say for the sake of argument that you did pick November first. That that provides an applicant less than two weeks to get you everything that is included in in this application. You know, and it is.
Not that it's due by November first that we would open it up on November.
Right, but we're, it's a thirty day open window and then once it's open, we've received applications. So, you know, if you've got an a, an applicant that is probably gonna go out and have professional documents prepared. I mean, but maybe they already have them, uh, you know, ready to go. But, you know, that you're, you're limiting yourself in in your, you know, by trying, by trying to get this done as quickly as possible. And I can understand that the desire to, you know, this council is finishing up and to have this, you know, is this kind of be their their final send off. But the reality of it is, you know, there's gonna be a new council next, you know, next month. And if they want to put the brakes on this, they can. Uh, you know, and now we're stuck somewhere in between having received applications, not having made recommendations. And and then this is not the council that's gonna be evaluating those those recommendations. So it it, from my perspective, it makes more sense that yes, th- this council has had the experience, they've they've done all the heavy lifting. And has have gotten us to the point where we're at right now. But i- it does make sense to 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 give those, that new council an opportunity to weigh in on that. Uh, you know, before, you know, they're theoretically, their second meeting, they could be having to determine which facility gets awarded a license. Or or gets awarded a license, that that's a pretty heavy burden for a new council. Um, especially if there's, there's a significant number of new members. So so that's, that's just from my perspective, I I don't see, I I really don't see the benefit of of doing it. Uh, there any benefit to doing it sooner than rather than later? I think um, like Jill had said, the more time that we we allow for this and and to finalize these processes. And and, you know, maybe whomever is going to do this scoring, we'll do a couple of practice runs, you know, we'll we'll grab some applications from another community. And then we'll go through it and just test out our process to make sure that it it is gonna work how we intend it to work. So again, this is, this has not been, this has not been a rushed process, it hasn't been a delayed process by any stretch of the imagination. This has been, this has been diligent work by 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 this council, by city staff, uh, getting, getting to where we're at right now. And making sure that uh what we have is is tailored appropriately to this city.
Yeah, um, I, that's great perspective, Scott. And I I agree with what Jill has said, I think Jill said it best, we want to do this right. Okay, so we don't wanna, and and doing it right means, you know, part one, the scoring has, you know, matrix has to be finalized. And we vote, you know, we decide on that if we're good with that. But part two is, you know, we have to rely on our administrative staff to tell us when they're comfortable and when they're ready to go. And that means having a plan, having the process put together, having it tested out, having contingencies thought of. And and, I mean, we've all worked out in the in the world, right? That's what you do, you gotta plan and you gotta make sure it works. We can't start it without knowing how it's going to potentially end. So, I mean, I'm I'm all for pushing and trying to get things done, but at the point we're at now, I think, you know, I think it's at a good point. We've almost got this thing nailed down to the point where we can look at things and vote on them. But at the end, we gotta make sure that we are ready to go forward. And um, I think we're not gonna be ready to go forward until, you know, Cheryl and Jill and Suzie and, you know, our administration tells us. Yeah, we've got everything organized and planned out, this is how it's gonna run. And that might not be like, you know, November first, right? And and I wouldn't start it without having that whole thing organized.
Alright, so what I, what I I'd like to see is, um, you know, right along with that, you know, commentary, or not commentary, comment. Uh, Salim, you know, is, you know, let's, let's, it sounds like it's, you know, a final draft is is a final version. Is is feasible for the eighteenth. Um, you know, we should have a resolution for that. And then we could have a resolution for the the start date, but let's push that date out so that we're not jamming it down the administration's throat. Especially given, you know, like Scott said, the next council could just very easily, you know, change that, you know, start date resolution. Um, so, yeah, I I, you know, if January first sounds like a a more comfortable date or January, whatever, fifty nine, I don't know what what. You know, that's January first is what, two, more than two months, so.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, so I I would be comfortable with that, I don't know how the other council people feel.
Yeah, I'd be comfortable with, you know, after talking with our administrative staff and them telling us what they're comfortable with. And when they think they're gonna have their plan and process ready to go. It's January first or fifteenth, or it's December fifteenth, yeah, whatever that date is, I agree. Let's, let's, you know, consult with them and and, cause they're the ones that are gonna be doing the work, they gotta set up that whole process. So, um, and let them tell us, yeah, we'll be ready at this to accept applications on this date. Let's go with that.
Right, and they're meeting, they're meeting next week. The whole group is meeting next week. So why don't you guys? Um, you know, figure out what you recommend as a, as a, a date. That works for the administration. And we can, we can bake that into the, the, the second resolution.
And we could do that. I mean, it's, it's not difficult to have a, a, a second resolution ready to go for the eighteenth. Um, and we can offer up suggestions and, and support as to why we feel that way. Uh, I know one of the things that, you know, we had talked about previously and why we picked January was because. You know, let's be honest, towards the end of the year, the holidays, I mean, people are gone for Thanksgiving and then, uh, you know, a week off for a couple of days off for. You know, Christmas, New Year, it's just, it's, those are now very productive days. Um. In a municipality, I mean, there's just, it's just, that's the reality of it. Um, and if that's, you know, we're under a timetable. To review these and get these done, that just consolidates it and puts more pressure on, on an already overworked staff. Um. So I, and that, and that was kind of our rationale when we had talked about it. But again, it's just, um. I, I think that's, that's probably the most appropriate way to handle it.
Yeah, and not just, not just, not just for our staff, but also for the applicants.
Right.
Yeah.
So I, I just want to offer something that, that I don't think you intended to say, Scott. Because I think also when um, constituents hear, hear things like, well, you know, we've got, we've got time coming off and we've got holidays and all those kinds of things. So we. We're, we couldn't get our work done during this timeframe. That is not what you meant to say.
No, I, I mean, it's, I, I'm just saying, it's, it's. I'm not trying, trying to dance around it all, but, but it is, I mean, it's.
And I understand administratively. I totally understand what you're saying. I just want to make sure that, that your words aren't, aren't bunched up in a different way when they come back.
That happens all the time anyway, so, um, but no, I, I mean, it's just. It, it is, it is a tough time of year to be productive. Um, and I'm just saying that from, you know, having done this type of work for, you know, over fifteen years, so.
With multiple scheduled vacations and those types of things.
Exactly. No, I think we have a consensus. Like I said, it's a parallel path. We just have to know. Scott's timing and Jill's timing as well as Cheryl's timing and their staff. So, yeah, I think we're saying the same things here.
But I'm, I'm uh, comfortable um, with that and, and we'll just. See what happens. How about that? Works for everyone?
Yep.
Yep.
Any other questions? Concerns about that? Okay, well then we'll move on to mayor and council comments. And I had a comment and I um, lost that comment um, during our discussion. So I'm gonna um, yield back and give it to. Um, council to see if there is something that uh, on your mind, um, before we close out.
Yeah, there's a great deal of speculation in, in the um, the city of Lathrow Village when it comes to this uh, election. So. Um, one particular candidate made a statement that the city already has. A uh, contract with a marijuana supplier and we are already in business. With marijuana and as you can see, we're not in business at all. So Scott, I need you to. Scott Baker, I need you to make an official statement here because. What's happening now is that um, rumor and innuendo is now being replaced by truth, okay? And hey, he's a new, he's a new uh.
My junior partner.
He's a new, he's a new Esquire. So rumor and innuendo is being replaced by truth. So. Clearly, we all.
No, Ian, ru- rumor.
Other way around.
Is replacing truth.
Is replacing truth, sorry. I, I was saying that. So uh, we need to make a clear statement here. Because.
I mean, there's, there's absolutely, there's no, no truth to those, that theory or whatsoever. I mean, this, this is a process that is. Hasn't even begun. I mean, we just spent the last twenty minutes talking about when we're gonna take applications. Um, the possibility that we already have somebody under contract. And again, this is not. You know, the, there is no financial benefit to the city directly from this. I mean, there's, there's revenue sharing, but we don't get. Um, you know. Uh, nobody gets a check in the mail from, from an applicant or something along those lines. I mean, this, this process is, is going to be. Be done completely above board. Uh, and, and everything to date has been. Uh, we, we have, we've refused the outside help, the consultants, as much as we appreciate. Uh, the offers from, from members of the cannabis community to draft our ordinance, to write our scoring matrix. Uh, we've done all of that internally. That's not something that we've, we've gone outside and, 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 you know, solicited help from, from any group. So, uh, you know, the, the thought that, that's, that's actually fairly insulting that we would already have something. Picked or selected. Uh, we don't even know who's gonna apply at this point.
Yeah, as a corollary, as a cor- this is an option to that, I guess. So. You know, one thing I, I, I've been told in, in my canvassing in the last couple of weeks is, you know. Uh, I'll, I'll have residents say, well, I hear a, a cannabis location is going, you know, at the end of the street where such and such a building is and, and just to. Build on what Scott said, there are no cannabis facilities that are slated for any particular building at this point. It's, you know. Anything you hear is complete speculation. Um, and you know, as Scott said, none of, none of, uh, I mean, the application process hasn't even started yet. So we have no idea. Where any of these are going to be, other than inside, somewhere inside the green zone, so.
Right, right. And let me, let me just add to that because um, you know, there was an email sent by one of the, the um, candidates. Uh, where, where she provided photographs of these big black guys with guns. And I guess she didn't understand that that was racially insensitive. And then also added my name as a person that has, number one, a application. Number two, a relationship. Number three, making money with this quote unquote, green pharma, which I've never, ever. Met before in my life. I'm not even pro marijuana and I'm not even anti marijuana. And I'm a thirty year engineer for automotive. So of course it's insulting. So. The reason why I'm bringing this up is that at some point, we've got to stand here and defend our character. Most people know who I am, but the people that don't know me, that literally just moved into the city. That keeps hearing this rhetoric, because apparently they thought I was gonna run for another term and I decided not to the very. Last day of the application. So they were gearing that up to say. This guy is illegal, this guy's taking money, blah, blah, blah. And I'm much comfortable where I'm at, but the point I'm making here is this. Until you do the research for yourself, you cannot take this at face value. It's insulting, it's degrading. I have a sixteen year old daughter at my house. Okay, I'm raising a family. When you guys see me in the park, they're with me. So please understand that. One person is disrespecting and dishonoring. The relationship that I have with this community. And the only reason why it's coming up is because I simply asked her to apologize for selling a four hundred thousand dollar house to Michigan first. And collecting a five to seven percent check.
I know. I have my gavel, so I can only.
Frustrated, I'm frustrated, I'm angry and I'm not running anymore, okay?
I get it, I get it and I.
I'm frustrated and then they're looking at me like.
And this, this just isn't the appropriate venue for that.
I'm sorry, but.
I'm sorry, but.
You guys gotta hear it.
You, you, you have every right to be frustrated and upset, but this is not, I mean, this is not productive. This is not helpful to, to the discussion. And, and I, it's just not the appropriate venue.
Okay, so let me just get productive. I will move on from that. So Scott, there were two petitions that were submitted. Over my six year period. The first one was. Uh, when the troops tried to submit a petition to stop the Michigan's first expansion, right? That one was rejected because it either wasn't done correctly or we didn't get the amount of signatures. Then we fast forward to a month ago where the uh, anti marijuana group submitted a petition. Uh, where the same candidate claimed that they didn't get uh, treated fairly. They got misinformation. And in addition to that, the app, the, the petition should have just gone through anywhere, anyway. Is there a process by which residents can come to you or the city manager to make sure that? Petitions are done correctly and once they're done correctly. They have the option to submit or get more signatures because. On both cases, um, the application was done incorrectly. I will be honest that I saw the first application.
Well, let me, let me just stop you right there, Ian, because first, the, the first one with respect to Michigan first was a, a referendum petition. Uh, based on a rezoning classification, which is not appropriate in a city. That, that's a option that's only available in townships and villages. So. That one was rejected on that basis. Um, and the, the second one simply didn't fit and there was an opinion letter that I drafted. That was circulated um, to council as to why that that wasn't appropriate. So, but no, to answer your question, there isn't anything that, that city staff or myself can do. Because essentially that will be providing legal advice to.
Exactly.
You know, and, and anybody could, I'm not just saying residents, but uh, you know, anyone that was felt that they had either. A desire to amend our charter or an ordinance or something like that, an, an outside group or any, anybody. Um, could simply just solicit legal advice from, from the city and that's, that's not appropriate and that's not what, what the role responsibility is. Though, those individuals uh, that were responsible for those, I, I, I don't. I know who, who, who you're referring to, but I don't think that that's, that's the particular individual in both cases that was.
Right.
Behind those, they may have been involved with it, but I don't think it's, it's been spearheaded by them. So. But, but the individuals that did submit those would have been, you know, we have talked with them. I have talked with um. Them directly about, about their petitions and, and did explain to them why, what the deficiencies were, you know, kind of above and beyond what was in my opinion letter, but. Um, no, I mean, as far as, as far as the city providing that type of assistance, that's not something that, that we're permitted to do. You know, that's just not within the scope.
Right.
Services we provide.
Right, that's the same advice you gave uh, six years ago and I agree with it because. Remember, if you recall, prior to me running, that petition was being circulated. And I wasn't a part of the petition, but I was a part of the process and I respected the decision you gave, right? So now, am I, I'm say, I'm stating here, we fast forward to this situation. Which was almost the same identical issue where they were asking for advice when you could not give that. They have to solicit their own advice and make sure that petition was accurate.
That's correct, yeah.
So what, so what should people, the residents do that want to have a petition, drive, get signatures and make sure they're doing it right? They should solicit their own legal counsel, right, to make sure.
There's a plethora of attorneys out there that specialize in, in municipal work that, that can assist uh, with drafting petitions. A lot of it is, is, a lot of the reasons why the, the petition with respect to the, the mayor, the cannabis issue. Wasn't sufficient. We're, we're simple formatting, um, is errors that, that could have, could have been addressed or easily. Corrected with uh, you know, a, a little more internet research and, and, you know, or, and or a, a visit to someone that, uh, an attorney that does practice in that area. So.
And, and Scott, isn't a lot of that guidance out on the Secretary of State's website as well?
There, there is some. I don't think they have form petitions out there, but I mean, the, the statutory language that. Does outline all the requirements is, is definitely there. It, and I, and I'll acknowledge it's sometimes fairly confusing. Um. Try to translate that down onto paper, but you know, there, there's a lot of organizations, I mean, even, even the group, the, the pro cannabis group that submitted. They had the appropriate format. They had some other issues with their petition and ultimately why it was, was not acceptable. But you know, the um, the forums themselves are, are fairly easy to come by on the internet, so.
Right, and, and let me just, uh, this last statement. So um, when they were, the, the anti group. Was uh, circulating the petition, we ran into the person that had the petition that had been circulating it. Uh, I believe his name was Bo and Bruce was there. We told him, you know, it's insufficiently written. If you really want this thing to have something, you gotta consult a lawyer. And we, we tried to give at least good information, right? But then again, we're hearing this that. You know, council stopped us from doing this petition. You know, they didn't hear us, we're not being heard and it's just ludicrous. We gave it as much advice as we can give because. That's what council does. Hey, here's our advice. We're not lawyers, go find a lawyer.
Oh, and, and I, you know, I had this, I had a conversation with that same individual and, and I don't know where you're getting the information. Uh, from that, it's, the council shut this down, but you know, when I had a conversation with him, he, he understood that there were some deficiencies with that petition. And he understood, I explained to him what would have been required in order for it to be actionable and the timing it would have had have been filed in. But you know, his, at least the conversation I had with him was that it was more from his perspective, uh, it was simply trying to provide. A perspective to this council as to the number of residents that were not in favor of moving this forward the way it was. And I, and I. I did explain to him some of the, uh, and it's also, this is what we've talked about in, in several meetings, that some of the potential ramifications of, of. Leaving this open ended and not having an ordinance on the books and, and what. Potentially that would subject the city to as far as o- other potential referendum petitions that. This is, you know, I think he understood that it, it just really came down to some residents felt that. This process moved too quickly or, you know, that there weren't enough meetings, which, which obviously we've gone over this. Numerous times, I think Bruce had the countdown exactly how many times we talked about this, but, but you know, there, i- i- what it all comes down to is, is. Citizen involvement and, and community involvement. And I, I think there's a certain number of residents that feel that. There's not enough opportunity for them, uh, or they don't have enough access to, which, you know, this council has done an exceptional job. I mean. In my time with the city, w- we only used to publicize, you know, on television, city council meetings. We didn't do planning commission, we didn't do study sessions. Uh, you know, the meetings weren't accessible on the internet, packets weren't online, it's like it is. The access to information with this council has, has vastly improved. I think the communication with the residents is vastly improved, but that's gonna be the go to when, when people. Get caught off guard. They're gonna, they're gonna say that, hey, I didn't know what was going on. I, I had no, I had no idea.
No, let me jump in there right there, because and, and it's funny because, you know, my brain gets, um, it flicks on and flicks off every now and then, right? So as you all were talking, I remembered that someone did approach me about the petitions, right? And so I, um. And was sent to my personal email address. And I just read the email again. Not only in this um, email. Did I give this person the link of where they needed to go to get the language for the petition, but I also gave them the date of when the petition needed to be filed. And the original email that was sent to me was on uh, July twenty fir-, I mean, it's July eleventh. And I responded the same day and said, you need to have this petition in by July twenty seventh. So. Um, that's in, that's written. And I can submit it to our attorney. So if it ever comes up where then we, you know, try to do any, you know, someone tries to say we did something wrong or anything, it's written out. It's, I have the proof of it. And so I just, and I thank God that that light bulb just kinda. Turned on for me, just for you bringing it up. So, um, is, people are gonna talk, you know, I mean.
Yeah, yeah.
And they're gonna dislike you for reasons you don't even know why. And as long as you are an elected official. You're going to have people, they're not gonna like the decisions that you are going to make, um, for the good of the cause and, and when you are. Running, then you gotta do whatever you gotta do to try to win. At least that's what people think. And so at that point, if you, as long as you keep that in your mind. All the other stuff can roll off your back. So I mean, I appreciate what you're saying, Ian, but I just realized we have proof. For the city.
Yeah, yeah.
It was explained at least sixteen days in advance. The petition um, language link on the Secretary of State's website was sent. It was dated, stated that it had to be in by July twenty seventh and it's also stated that you need to get your personal attorney involved with it.
Right. Okay, I appreciate that. Um, the last thing I'm covering, it's got nothing to do with marijuana. So again, Scott, yeah, yeah. So again, Scott, just um, referring to you because you're legal counsel. So. When we brought the vacation of the alley before council and this was regarding Bruce Cantor. Um, because again, this is the same issue going on where someone's accusing a council person of benefiting. And enlarging his property when in fact Bruce has volunteered to pay more taxes and two other residents have volunteered to pay more taxes. Due to the vacation of the alley. Can you please clarify that?
I, I mean, I guess I, I don't really know what needs to be clarified. I mean, a vacation of a, a parcel of property or a, a. Street or an alleyway is not something new within the city. Um, we've done it on numerous other occasions. Uh. You know, the reasons, the rationale were put forth on the record at the time was done. Um, again, I, you know. I, I'm not trying to pick on you, Ian, but you know, responding to everything that, that you read on Facebook at a council meeting is not, I mean, it, it doesn't help anything. Uh, people are gonna believe what they wanna believe.
No, I'm not responding to anything on Facebook. I'm just responding to what was said during the forum. What was said to me to try to verify at the forum and I'm simply doing that. That's the only two, those, those are the only two items I have. That's the only two, those are, those are the only two items I have.
Yeah, I mean, Bruce went through for the appropriate channels, um you know, that were required to to apply for that vacation. He applied, he had the surveys done, he provided all the requisite information of the city, and the city acted on it based based upon uh the precedent, the procedure that I think that the resolution actually that authorized the city to do it was uh adopted in nineteen eighty-two. So this is not a, this is not a new process.
I agree totally.
In the the advice I would give you as the non attorney, Scott's giving you great legal advice, is the fact that if someone is bringing allegations repeatedly, then they they will bring those as legal accusations, and they can set that up and and investigate it legally. They're not choosing to do that, so they're tending to live in a world where it's a lot of hearsay and a lot of accusation. And as Kelly, you know, said earlier, you just gotta rise above and let that that fray go on, because they're gonna continue to attack because they're hearing back from you. And the more information you give and the more fuel you give, the more opportunity there is for us to wade into sticky ground. And so I think just when people bring these accusations forward, simply saying, you know, we've acted, you know, under full legal counsel advice. If you believe that we've done something inappropriate or behaved, you know, in a bad manner, please bring that forward in a in a legal manner. And just step back, because the more mug that, you know, literally, you can wrestle with a pig, but all it's gonna do is make you both dirty and make the pig mad. So I just let it go.
In the end, the pig enjoys it.
So is there anyone else that, Ian, are you all set?
No, I'm all set. Um I brought it up just to get this feedback, and I appreciate that, and and I'm not angry, I'm just saying that.
Oh, nobody thought you were angry, I don't think.
No, but we also don't want you to be hurt.
Um, oh, no, not hurt.
I understand what you meant. Um, is there any other um council person that have anything to say?
Yeah, I got a couple of small things. Through my canvassing, I did, I did receive what I think is a a a good suggestion, which was also apropos to some of the discussion we had earlier today in terms of traffic calming and and reducing cut through traffic. And at least in in the northwest corner, um you know, where Sunnybrook, Cambridge, Meadow Brook, you know, where those streets all come together, where you get a lot of cut through traffic for um uh people not wanting to wait going south on Southfield Road to make the turn west on to uh eleven mile, they cut through the neighborhoods, and then they, then what they do is when they get to Meadow Brook, they jump on to six ninety-six, and the only way to do that is to actually illegally go over the the little bit of a berm that's there. Um so they kind of, there there's a kind of a little tiny curve there, and they just, most most cars can just hop it real easily, and then they turn on to the the entrance ramp to the service drive. And I had a couple of residents suggest to me, and I think it's a great suggestion, is is asking the uh road commission to put a proper curb there. Because with with a little two inch curb, anybody could jump over that. If we put a regular, you know, eight inch curb over there, or six inch curb, whatever the height of a normal curb is, um that that's gonna completely eliminate, well, I don't wanna say completely eliminate, but that will dramatically uh reduce the amount of cut through traffic there, because in order to, in order to get onto this, the the entrance ramp, they're gonna actually have to turn to go the wrong way down the down eleven mile before they can U-turn to get back on it, as opposed to being able to hop that tiny little curb. So Cheryl, I was wondering if maybe that might be something we could um bring up with the road commission um to see if there's something they can do about that. Yep, uh and then the other, the other question I had is, um did we get any response from Tringali with the um you know, the blocking of the road and doing the zigzag pattern and, you know, blocking traffic when they're doing garbage?
I haven't had a follow up conversation with them, the initial one, uh I did, I shared the information with them, so I'll follow up with them on it.
Okay.
Hey Bruce, um just one observation today, there was a different truck pattern today. So they actually drove down one side of the street, picked up and came and came right back. We're talking Lathua Boulevard. Last week, based on what you you observed a couple of weeks ago, they actually were going zigzag, so maybe they're trying to adhere to it.
Yeah, or maybe also could have been different drivers or.
No, no, same driver, same driver every time, yeah, yeah, same driver. I've got one more thing, I'm sorry. This is regarding tree trimming. So um the city trimmed uh the city trees, uh that's uh on the 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 street line. And when they did that, they did not um follow the code that we as residents have been following, which is to take the trimmed uh branches and lay them uh pretty close to the to the street so that the shredder truck can pick it up. They basically just kinda dumped it in uh in the culvert. So and this happened on several houses. So I Cheryl, we need to kinda make sure they're doing that right. So if it's gonna be trimmed, just have them line it up on the right at the 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 street line. Because the the truck, the shredder truck guy will not pick it up.
Will do.
All right, appreciate that.
Is there anything else from the council? Staff? And just in closing, I just wanted to say, how do you all like the new way that this is set up?
Good, it's good. The one thing that was a little annoying was at the beginning when people were coming on and it was constantly beeping. I don't know if there's a way to turn that sound off.
You can turn the sound off through your settings.
I did, I I did turn it off.
Yeah, mine has that, yeah, there's a setting up in your left hand corner. Um you you click on that little shield and it'll be a little like a gear. You click on there and there's all your settings for your uh zoom.
Yeah, for sure.
So you can turn off, you can turn off the beeps on that thing?
Yeah, cuz I don't get any that come in, because I've already turned that off a long time ago.
I do want to note there was over thirty people in attendance.
Thirty-four to be exact, I counted.
All right.
Yeah, and if you had a chance to read um the city administrator report, I do want to add one correction that there will be a planning commission meeting this month. I was, had started it last month, so that was the September meeting, so there will be one in October. And also, I will be having the um first Connect Two Twenty Five, that's my extension number, so I thought it was cute. Um um coffee and conversation with the city administrator, me, and the first one will be at Panera. So um before we get the people complaining that they can't attend between eight and nine AM, I plan on rotating the dates, the times, the locations, so that'll um hopefully provide an opportunity for anyone who wants to come and share their thoughts, questions, or just get to meet and greet me a little bit, so.
That's excellent, how long have you been working on that?
Well, actually, before the pandemic, so you know, that kind of put a kibosh on having some in-person gatherings, but um wanted to try to go ahead and get that started.
I think that's a great idea.
I didn't want to do it in a Zoom environment, so.
I think that that's a good idea, and I know that that was some of the feedback that we had from um the um the uh candidates forum that we had on um Saturday, but you've been working on it, it's just about uh executing it. So I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Um, and also regarding the candidates forum, if you weren't able to attend, I know that it is on, it's on YouTube? Now, Cheryl?
You're on, you're on mute, Cheryl.
I haven't received the notification of it yet, but sometimes I get that the next day, but as soon as I am aware, I'll I'll let you know.
Okay.
Somebody also posted it on the on the Facebook on on villagers page too.
Yeah, I think.
Yeah, but there's a chunk that's missing out of it from what um we were told. Um so as soon as we get it, we'll post that. Um Jason, Hammond, you have a question?
Are we all done with council?
You wanna open it up for public comment first?
Well.
Yeah, I'm sorry, were you, you all are not finished with?
Yeah, just one, one last thing uh to Dr. Mitchell. So I wanted to close out the the mental health information that I submitted a couple of months back. Want to be able to uh point individuals to that, and then we officially uh close it out. Cuz I I didn't get a chance to do that last month, cuz we had some other issues going on. But if we can just officially say where it's gonna be and how to access it on the city's website, I would appreciate that.
Okay, and I I guess for the public comment, I was just advised there's not a way to raise hands?
Uh, you can, Jason's hands is raised.
Okay, all right, so there is, okay.
I think he's still muted.
He's still muted, okay.
There we go, yes, I had to be given permission to unmute. So uh yeah, uh first of all, I just wanted to check and make sure that the opportunity to raise hands and come in for public comment actually worked. So this is a good test of that, which is great. Uh secondly, uh appreciated having the opportunity to uh see the candidate forum via a live stream and and a replay of it, because I wasn't able to be there in person, and I hope that other people in the city were able to take advantage of this as well. But as you noted, parts of it were cut off, so I'm really looking forward to seeing what the city publishes on the YouTube channel, so I can see uh everything that was that was stated. Um but I'm really glad that that forum had happened, I'm glad and a lot of people, it sounds like a lot of people showed up, and there was really good dialogue, and that was very, very interesting to see what the candidates had to say about their ideas about how to improve the city when they had those ideas. So thanks for um making, thanks for working for uh the A uh APIA boat organization, the Michigan United, to make that happen. That's all, thank you.
Thank you. I don't know if I officially said that we are opening the public comment, but I guess we did, so there is that part, is there anyone else that would like to um speak, sorry, Jason? Gracious, what am I, keep hitting stuff, sorry.
Google five, yeah, phone plan by Google.
All I tried to do was go to YouTube just to see if it was posted, and I don't know why, everything else is playing, I'm sorry.
Just tell me I'm gorgeous again and look in the mirror.
Wake up every morning and say that you're gorgeous, oh my God, why is this going on? I'm not, I wasn't touching anything, I swear. Anyway, is there anything, I won't touch anything else, I promise. Um is there anything else for the good of the cause?
Madam Mayor, this is Yvette speaking, I just need to know your location.
That's what I thought, I asked Bruce that, did we take roll call at my location? Thank you, God is at home finally, Lathua Village, uh Oakland County, Michigan. And I will say that my son has been in the hospital for five days straight. And um for him to have just gotten out um a couple of hours ago, I am like now drained, so. If everyone is in one, one, one accord, this would be a great time to return our call.
I hear you. Do we make a motion or that's it?
Did we, did we, did we give a final call for public comment?
Oh, yeah. Oh, someone's hand is up.
No, I clap. Somebody's clapping, and I just say, if anybody else had something, no one said anything, and so I took the silence and no hands up as I had it together, and I did what I was supposed to do, so.
Okay, is there still a um early meeting, sorry? Um Cheryl, I saw that you canceled that, but is there still an early meeting that's gonna be coming up later this month?
Okay, so the, uh thank you for asking, the October eighteenth meeting, the study session will begin at five thirty PM. There will be a ZBA meeting at seven o'clock PM.
Okay.
And then council's meeting will start at seven thirty PM.
Okay, thank you so much.
And today, the election commission meeting will commence after you conclude your meeting. So we will not stop the recording, but for those staying, just stay here, you don't have to sign off or sign back in or anything to stay.
Okay.
But those of us that are just trying to shut their eyes for two seconds can get off. Okay, well, if there's no more comments from the public or from council or from staff, I would say that let's all have a great night and we'll um talk soon.
All right, thanks for a productive meeting, take care.
Bye, everybody.
Bye now.
Bye.
Thanks, Scott, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Bye.
Okay.
Look Cheryl, I followed directions.
So I would like to start the election commission meeting for October fourth, twenty twenty-one, eight twenty-nine. And first thing I'll do is roll call.
Uh Dawn Medley, uh Oldfield, uh Suffolk County, New York. I kinda think.
Scott Baker, present, Addison Township, Oakdale County, Michigan.
And Yvette Tally, present in McKinney, Texas, Collin County. First order of business. If we could get an approval for an agenda, we have the revised agenda uh in one of us this evening.
So moved.
Sorry, I'll second, can you drop that in the chat? Thank you.
And I'll do a roll call for approval of agenda. And that will be Commissioner Medley.
Uh, yes.
Thank you, I'm voting yes, and Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Thank you. I almost said Councilmember Medley, I don't think.
That's okay, I don't even know my name right now.
So next we have approval of minutes, and we're gonna uh have a motion and second for them separately. The first will be September twenty-eighth, twenty twenty, which was last year's uh election commission meeting. And if I could get a move in second for that, please?
I'll make the move to approve.
I'll second.
I have a motion and second, and roll call, I'm voting yes, Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
And Commissioner Medley?
Yes.
Motion carried. And next there will be the minutes, approval for minutes for September eighth, twenty twenty-one, that if I can get a motion and second, please?
I'll motion, or I'll second.
Roll call, Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Medley?
Yes.
And I'm voting yes, motion carried. At this time, if there is any public comment, there are any hands raised, it is public comment time. Are there any?
Central, there are no hands raised.
Thank you. Next we will have uh discussion items. Normally, this meeting is for the discussion of the ballots ordered. The mail, the date that they were mailed out to approve the precinct inspectors and to approve the uh the precinct inspectors and the receiving board. And the acting board, accounting board as well. I'm sorry.
And the test date, the public test accuracy test date?
The pub, that's right, thank you, the public accuracy test date, there's a typo. It's really, it is going to be on October twenty-sixth at three PM, October twenty-sixth, that one should be a two. But the location and time are the same, and it will be published in the paper this upcoming Thursday. So ballots have been ordered, ballots have been mailed. Um we're receiving ballots back, and we have uh drop boxes out outside, and we have one that's located near the police cars. It's locked as well, and we have one on the north end of the building, near the entrance. It's a big black box, you can't miss it, and it's locked as well. So our office hours are eight to four thirty Monday through Friday. If you wanna come in, we have a box on the inside too, or you can hand it to one of the staff as well. The office uh is closed between twelve thirty and one thirty daily for lunch. So if it's closed, you can always feel free to leave your your ballot in the outside receptacle.
Question, Yvette, where, if they hand it to staff, where does staff put the ballots?
The ballots are locked every day, yeah, in the office.
Okay.
They're on the lock and key.
All right, I just wanted, I know that that's what happens, but I just wanted to have it out there.
Yes, yes, I'm glad you asked that.
And and we're clearing, and we're clearing those outside buckets every day too, the outside receptacles, yeah.
Several times a day, yes.
Okay.
Yes, they are. Yes, they are. So that was our discussion items, so our next item will be the appointment of our election. So, look at what our discussion items, so our next item will be the appointment of our election. Uh, by the election commission for the precinct inspectors, the receiving board and the absentee voter counting board. And there, there is an attached list as well. I'm gonna separate out Mr. Zitron cuz he's probably not on that list because we finalized all of that today. And he's going to work so graciously accepted to work out in Oakland County to count the absentee voter. Ballots, which are gonna be counted out there, except for the ballots that come in on election day, those will be counted at City Hall.
Did we determine if Oakland County's picking those up or do we have to have an officer transport them?
Great question. We just finalized that today as well and Oakland County will be coming to pick those up. Yes, they will. That we just finalized that information today. So.
Commissioner Tally, I think um the agenda was set up so that each of the action items are separate uh motions.
Okay, so our next one should be the appointment of the election inspectors. Thank you. So when you have that list before you, and so it would be our election inspectors and receiving board.
Yes, I'll, I'll make an uh, uh, motion to appoint Myra Allen and Tina Davis to the receiving board inspectors. And Mary Myox, Wilma Patrick, Audrey Grossman, Darlene Shot Bear. Tina Davis, Regina Cobb, Myra Allen, Charles Robinson, Dominique Hicks. Harland Harker, Sean Driscoll and Rachel Ramie, Rami.
Yes.
As precinct inspectors.
Thank you.
Um, I'll second.
Thank you. And roll call, Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Medley?
Yes.
And I'm voting yes. Motion carried. The next item.
The public accuracy test?
Yes, and that data's throwing me off because it's really the twenty-sixth, okay.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to schedule the public accuracy test to be held October twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one at three PM in the meeting place. At City Hall, second floor.
And I'll second.
Thank you. Roll call, Commissioner Medley?
Yes.
I'm voting yes. Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you. And then the next item will be sixty. Which we will um have consideration of authorization for the city treasurer or either their um appointee. To assist with the uh conducting of the testing. Uh, we'd like to have the election commission at that meeting for October twenty-sixth. But in case that they, that they can't, I always have a backup so we can have someone else there to witness the testing. As well. So if I can get a motion and second.
I'll make that motion.
And I'll second, and I'll, I'll just add, by the way, discussion is that I will, as usual, try to make it, it's, we typically do it on days that I'm in court, so. Uh, I will try to make it by three, but no, no guarantees.
Okay, thank you. Roll call, I'm voting yes. Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Medley?
Yes.
Motion carried. And this is a new item on the agenda because this is our first time having Oakland County count our absentee voter ballots. Which I think, and I'm not sure, but I'm just thinking, this may be the trend from now on. They have the fast. Uh, machine, counting machines there and they can count them quickly. They're gonna do uh Lethar Village along with twelve. Other communities, they'll be counting. So they'll get those results out. Uh, quickly. So I think this is something they, they're trying and they may, we may have to do it this way in the future. I've not been told. But I'm just thinking, I could be wrong. But in the case of uh Lethar Village being the first time that. We're going to utilize this service, Mr. Zitron so graciously accepted. And he's excited to do so, so he'll have to go up to Oakland County. And he'll be there all day. So if we could approve him as being the uh person for the absentee voter counting board.
I'll make a motion to appoint Ian Zitron to the Oakland County Absentee Counting Board for the November second, twenty twenty-one general election.
And I will second that.
Thank you. Roll call, Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
A bit, Turner Metley?
Yes.
And I'm voting yes. Motion carried. And for just discussion items or anything you may, any thoughts or comments you may have, just feel free and we'll discuss them. But um we just discussed that Oakland County will be counting the um absentee ballots this time. Social distancing for our election workers and at polls, we will still have that in place. We had a good system that went on for the presidential. For the primary and the general, we're gonna still do that system. They're gonna come in one door, vote and leave out the back door. I'll have a PPE, their hand sanitizer, hand sanitizers, wipes, everything that they need. To keep everything sanitized and safe.
Plenty of pens.
Plenty of pens, plenty of um face masks, everything that they may need or if the voter should. They, if they forget their mask and ask, we have some available.
So I, I have a question about that. Are people required to wear a mask when they come in to vote? Like if somebody refuses to wear a mask, will they be allowed to vote?
They will be allowed to vote.
Yeah, so as of right now, there's, there's no masking requirements. That, but that's obviously subject to change, you know, who knows where we'll be.
Yes.
Right. I think as we get closer to cold and flu season, we're gonna see an uptick and there's gonna be probably more stuff put back into place, so.
You're absolutely.
I'm actually more concerned about the folks who are volunteering to work and, and you know, any kind of. Negative experience they might have by somebody refusing to wear a mask, either because. They're, you know, contrary or because, you know, it puts one of our, our workers in danger.
Well, I can say with our record turnout in November, we had no issues, none whatsoever.
Well, that's cuz Lethar Village people are pretty much rule followers, except for.
Absolutely.
Stop signs.
Uh, let's see, is there any unfinished, unfinished business or new business?
Nothing for me.
Other items, we can have a move-in second for adjournment.
I'll make a move to adjourn.
And I'll second.
Alright, motion carried. Well, we'll do a roll call. I'm voting yes. Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
And Commissioner Medley?
I'm voting yes.
Motion carried. Thank you all. I appreciate your help.